And call this meeting to order at this time if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting no public comment, can I get a verification of the posting of the agenda, please?
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on February 12th between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00 at all of the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get an approval of this agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of agenda as submitted.
A second. It's been moved in second. If all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We'll jump to our budget hearing with our first budget hearing, County Manager Indigent Defense, Water Resource and Community Support. Alexa?
Alexa Robinson, County Manager, for the record. I would also like to mention that I will be presenting the General Government Fund, not the Comptroller, as stated in the agenda. Just go down the line. We're going to start with County Manager's Budget. Let's see, we kept it fairly flat. I think we're down a little bit. The only thing we increased was the telephones, not for the full price of the Ring Central, but just a little bit higher to offset the increased cost for the Ring Central licenses. Okay. And then a minor bump into the vehicle repairs, just because it had gone over a couple of years. There was like a one year where it was $3,000 and one year where it was $100 or something, and it was budgeted at like $200, so we just increased that a little bit because of driving and increased repair costs possible. Just kind of averaged it a little bit more. But we dropped out computers and we reduced miscellaneous, so we kept the budget pretty flat. It's just a little bit under last year's. If there's any questions on that one? On the General Government, that one went up mostly due to insurance costs because insurance jumps by like somewhere close to $100,000 every year. So based on historical costs, I just increased that to account for what's going to be insurance fee increases and a lot of professional fees. Those contracts usually get negotiated sometime in May, so we're estimating, and they always go up. So we're just estimating jumps based on historical costs. For those, I increased postage a little bit because postage goes up every year. There was a couple of accounts that were, every year they were budgeted about $10,000 under, so I just brought those up to true cost for a more accurate budget. And that was it. Most of the cost is just insurance. There's like a, am I not recording very well? It's not the first time I've been told that. So there was the massive jump in insurance liability. It went up like, I don't know, $40,000 or $50,000. That's the majority of the increase is those insurance costs. Let's see, we've got the Indigent Defense. Again, that's just increases a little bit here and there across the board for professional fees. I went off again. Because professional fees go up every single year. Everyone renegotiates their contract and then wants to be paid more, so they go up. Water Resources Budget. That one. Minor increases from just like historical costs looking into it. Chris helped me. We looked at a few contracts and things. A lot of it's offset by revenues that come in for those same accounts. So for like contracted services, we offset that with like geothermal and other water resource revenues. The ground basin fee, what we get is what we pay to the state, so that's just basically zero, even though it shows as an expense here. Our miscellaneous, we're reimbursed for that with the lease revenues from the Wild Goose Properties and the DV Water Level, the Dixie Valley. It's offset by the CWSD interlocal contract that we're going to be negotiating here in a little bit. So even though it looks like a bunch of expenses, they're offset by revenues coming in. And then we have the Community Support. And that we kept flat. We just kind of maneuvered monies around so that the pre-approved designated to certain groups amounts were back to their 2024 fiscal year because in 2025, they got a 15% across-the-board cut. And we revoked, we removed that and we put them back up to their prior. We increased Churchill County Livestock Junior Show because they'd actually requested that amount in 2024, didn't get it, and then were somehow cut 15% from their 2023 instead of their 2024 amount. It was, so they got a jump to make up for the clerical error and the 15%. And we just maneuvered that out of the miscellaneous grant and kept the base, the final amount, flat. I think that's all my budgets. Any questions on anything?
Thank you, Alexa. Any questions or comments from board or staff? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll jump to Social Services and Life Center. Shannon?
Do they have a presentation?
They have.
Okay. Oh, great. Nope. That's perfect. Just kidding. That one does not work today.
Good morning. For the record, Shannon, it's Churchill County Social Services. So a little bit different is what I'm not, I'm not going to go through page by page on the budget. There's a lot of questions on how Social Services budget works. It is very complex based on the fact that we have several tax revenues that come in and then our grant funding. So that's why I provided you this presentation. I'm not trying to bore you with a PowerPoint. I'll go as fast as you want or as slow as you want to try to gain some understanding. So if we go to the first one, it really looks at our programs and how they are mandated and how they come about. So we have our mandated services, which are sexual assault victims of crime. What this looks like is we have to pay the $1,000 for any sexual assault case, and then it goes to the state. So as you're looking through the budget, there's certain things, and that's why I want to give that education. We have our indigent care, which means we have to do burial cremation for individuals that are found to be indigent. We have our Medical Affordable Care Act. So when you look at this, we have to pay the 50% match toward the federal share for Medicaid for individuals that are, meet the criteria for a waiver program or institutional care. This is required in statute, and this amount caps at eight cents, which we'll go into that a little bit more in detail. We also have the jail medical. What this, previously, Social Services paid 100% of the jail medical minus the reimbursements from inmates that came in. It was found that 100% of the population at the jail is not indigent, and so it does not meet the statutory requirement for us to paying that. So three years ago, what we started doing is we do a survey during the month of November to determine the percentage of the population that is actually indigent within the jail system. And so we've been working through that, and then we do a transfer at the end of the year to reimburse that percentage that they've expended. We have our Safety Net Services by statute under 428. We need to ensure that our residents have Safety Net Services such as rent, utilities, food and fuel. A lot of this we do through partnerships, like our food banks and things of that sort, but other things we do have to do direct assistance. And then we have our Child Protective Services. We are required by statute to pay for the CPS investigations. We don't pay for placement. We don't pay for foster care. But every time there is an allegation of child abuse, we are paying for that portion. This is the one that is a stickler and has increased over the years. We actually fought back three years ago and said, the costs are going aside. We don't believe this is meeting our youth population percentages at the increase. So they did an audit on this. There was a readjustment of our assessments, and they do provide you a report quarterly of how many reports come in, how many have been investigated, how many have been thrown out, et cetera, so that you do have that data. We also have to do Child Developmental Services. So any youth within our fa, in our community that has developmental challenges, we need to provide them those services. This is a contract with the state. We have been lucky since 2020 that we have not had to make a payment to this based on ARPA funds that came in. Well, ARPA funds are starting to ramp down. We do keep it in the budget so that that placeholder is there because that could come before us. And then again, it mentions the Medicaid match. And then when you just look on the right side, it's just talking about all the programs that we provide to support. One of the biggest things in Social Services is we may find a need such with our youth at JPO as the new position that is taking place at the library. And so we work closely with any department to see how some of our funding can support certain positions to reduce different risks in our community because that does bring down other costs, CPS costs, other things that way. And so we have mentioned such as our Parent Project with juvenile probation, and this is a court-ordered parenting skills. We had found funding for the youth coordinator position and things such as that. So this continues on to our Senior Disability Services. As you know, we have the Dining Room. Currently, it's a $3 suggested donation for 60 and older, $6 for under 60, and this does require a match with our grants. And so that's with our wages and food purchases. The required match is 15%. We're serving an average of 155 people a day in the dining room. If you were there yesterday, you could see there was no parking because it was Meatloaf Day. We had close to 210 people come through. We have our Meals on Wheels, which is our $3 suggested donation also. This is a 15% required match also. So when you're just looking at these, our numbers are an average of 180 per day. And then we go to our Homemaker Services. When we, these are all things we don't have to do. We're not mandate required, but it's what's expected, right, to keep our community safe. Homemaker is not so that somebody gets their house cleaned. It's so that their home stays safe. We have somebody in their home once to twice a week to make sure that adequate water supplies, it is clean, you're not getting bed bugs, or those other things that cause other community risks. When you look at Meals on Wheels, it's not just a meal, and that is our slogan, because we are checking on people every day to make sure that they haven't fallen, there's not something wrong. And if we do find there's something wrong, we're engaging either our resource liaisons to do that outreach to make sure that they stay more independent in their home. Why this is important? Keep them in their home. It reduces our Medicaid match responsibilities. We don't want them to be in institutions. It's not even right for the individual. We have special activities at the Life Center. This is for socialization. Keep the minds safe, right? We did expand our Transportation and Neil Program last year. What this was doing is CART could not get individuals to doctors in Reno as they needed, so we provide that gap service. We are a last resort. Going into our Homeless Transitional, one of the things is we're building, I want you to be aware, we will be coming forward and presenting what the new homeless transitional house looks like. We are currently working on what that bid package looks like. We received $1.7 million for this project. We've spent just under $800,000 to date for the purchase of that project. So we're not sure if this will come forward in this fiscal year or next for the final approvals for RFP. When we look at the lab, this was a big discussion yesterday. The lab was a public health response. This is something that we continue to use as we move forward now with bird flu, but we're looking at making this lab sustainable on its own. How do we do that? We expand our menu of testing. We make sure that we have a fee schedule that is really competitive with big labs such as Quest and those, and we provide them a quicker service. Our turnaround is usually within two hours. So we're looking at expanding the lab and we're looking at going into substances. A huge thing is with the opioid. We would be looking, we have some money earmarked in there to buy the equipment required for opioid. We're moving into GI. My biggest concern in moving to GI is ARPA funds are going away. You look at the federal freezes. I'm not sure how much more funds we're going to receive to be able to buy more equipment. So how can we build a fee schedule that we can get a return on our investment in so many years? And so we're mapping that as we go. We're always applying for different grants. Yesterday, it came up about the lab. We will be looking to more funds to the state. As we speak, I'm working on three applications due by Monday to expand services at the Life Center. What it will do is offset more of our costs for our staffing so we can use certain grants to match ones that we have from ADSD. We're always looking for funding sources. We don't always get funded on every one we apply for. I think we put in a total of 74 applications last year, and we received only 36. But we try for every funding we can possible. We're always looking to increase cost efficiency. ADSD has reached out to me. They are launching a new project in two months where they, with a college, I want to say it was Minnesota, it was a quick call. They asked if we would be willing to have them come in, look at our waste of food. How can we reduce that? How can we reduce some of the staff costs and be more efficient? So we're always open to those options. So when you look at our funding projections, we're very different than a lot of the departments, and there was a comment made yesterday, we are not general fund. So when we look at ours, we always try to stay out of the general fund. I don't think in 21 years, we've touched the general fund because we try to really make sure that the grants and everything come forward. So we have several different tax bases. When you look at, when we spoke to Sheri, we're estimated at $91,676 per cent this year. So we will have our senior tax allocation, which is six cents, our social services tax allocation at 6.5, indigent tax, which is an eight, is six cents. This is a big one because by statute, they can charge us up to eight cents. This is our Medicaid match. So if the Medicaid match requires us to expand up to that eight cents, we have to provide that by statute. We reduced this back when with the new senior citizen tax allocation was put into place because we had large reserves. At that time, we were close to $8 million in reserve. They were looking at doing a sweep, and that's when Comptroller Colt was here. And through discussion, it was found, let's reduce that eight cents down so that we can use some of those, so we didn't get swept. The state was looking for money anywhere at that time. But this is something to note. You know, at six cents, we're getting the 550. If we were to have to go up to eight cents, our obligation could be to $680,000 for the Medicaid match. We also have our Indigent Accident Fund. This is 1.5 cents. What this program was put into place, and this was way before my time, there was a huge accident in Pershing County. Basically, the individual was found to be indigent, and so the county was responsible to pay for that individual. They almost, they almost went bankrupt over this because of the cost. So the state came together with all the counties and they built the Indigent Accident Fund. Each county pays in 1.5 cents into this fund. So if there is an accident, the county now is only responsible for $3,000 of the first claims. Then this fund pays for that accident. Well, when you had the Medical Healthcare Reform Act come through, really, not many people are considered indigent anymore medically because it is a last resort. So individuals of low income qualify for Medicaid or other sources, the exchange. So not many people are able to go to this. So what has happened with this fund now is it builds up each year, and the Indigent Accident Fund with Nevada Association of Counties has a board that they meet. And they look at how much has been expended, how much has came in, and they come in a percentage to refund back to the counties. So this year, yesterday, it was on the consent agenda, we received just over $280,000 in reimbursement. What happens is it's required by statute that $280,000 has to be allocated to pay our Medicaid match first, but the purpose is to open up $280,000 for us to use for other indigent services. So now we can use it for match for our homeless programs, for our senior projects, anything that really qualifies in there. So it can be kind of confusing, but it's exciting as we've made these agreements because we are getting money back into our county. When we look at our grants anticipated, this is our allocations looking as of February 17th. Essential Services were projected just to have over $400,000. Health Services, just under $400,000. And when you look at Health Services, this is the lab. This budget, you know, when we looked overall health prior, it was built for COVID when we had to do an emergency health department. Now it's truly just the lab and our support to Central Nevada Health District. Senior Services, we're projecting just under $450,000. Donations, these are for senior services. So it's those donations that I highlighted when we first started. It's coming in for individuals that do the $3 donation or for under 60 and the $6 for over 60, we're projecting just to have under $43,000. Fees for facilities, rentals and usage. We have, within the Life Center, people can rent the facility, and so we do charge for that. It offset our costs for staffing to be in there, our utilities, all the extras that happen. And then we also have the beauty shop. One of the biggest things we did put in here this year is we have to upgrade the beauty shop to meet compliance with the state of Nevada. But we do charge 400 a month per seat, I guess you call them. Our goal is when we get that updated, we could have up to two seats. So we have one now filled. We would go to two and put that out to the open market. And then our reimbursements, we're projecting from IAF, Medicaid and other miscellaneous, $296,000. I won't dive into, I don't have long, and you can have me slow down, but I don't want to take someone else's time. I have actually given you a breakdown on every one of these grants. It talks about if it's federal pass-through or if state 100%. Why I felt this was important this year is as you looked at the federal freeze. This is a huge concern when you work in the realm of grants. When these freezes happen, cuts happen. As we go to DC next week, this is going to be a huge portion of my conversation is how important these funds are to us. When you look at Community Service Block Grant Fund all the way up to the end, they said direct services were not going to be frozen. On the last report, CSBG, which is direct and pays majority of our salaries for matching requirements for grants, is still going to be frozen. They're talking about a huge cut or eliminating completely. And this would take away our Community Services designation as a community action agency. And so I have listed every one of these. COSUP, which is, supports our forensic program in the jail system and also the coordinator over at JPO, 100% federal. This is something also they're looking and swiping. It's a justice grant. So there's a few pages of the grants for you, I guess two. Let's just kind of give you a little bit more as the budget, as it aligns how it reports to you. We have our 220s, 421, which is Assistance and Cash and Goods. This is required to have per NRS 428. It's our Grants to Needy. So yesterday, the conversation came up about the Welfare Set Aside Grant. What happens is Grants to Needy is our welfare set aside that we allocate here at the county. And so we put funds here to do direct assistance to those that are needing of essential services to meet that statutory requirement. This is also where that assault expenditures are placed. We do have a category for mental health services, and it's increasing access for our community members to get mental health services. And those are through partnerships. We will be bringing forward to you about June, requests from the community for support to increase mental health access and also other services such as mindfulness in the schools. So you as will have another shot at this and how you want to allocate these funds. And we utilize the marijuana tax reimbursement, which is about $80,000 every year, and this mental health. Currently, we're supporting the UNR expansion of social work internship, which is at the Churchill County School District in all schools now. It started as a pilot project just in the high school. Now it's in kindergarten all the way through high school. And then also, we fund some support over at the Churchill Community Coalition for Mindfulness Too Good for Drugs, which was the intent for the Marijuana Tax Fund. 422 is, it actually works with our budgets of 393 and 394. This is Indigent Care. It's required to, this was separated out back in, I want to say, 2007 because it is required to increase by 4.5% annually. If you were to increase our 394 and our 393 by four point, we'd be over probably $50 million at this point. So what we did is we broke out based on the statute, and we're able to do our first expenditures. And so we spend this for our indigent services first, then we go to these other accounts. And this is the jail medical and prescriptions, and they're projected at 26% this year. Indigent Accident Fund is separated out at the 1.5%. We have the supplementary medical fund, which is, pays directly to the state, and then the 50/50 match. And we can go through these statutes later if you'd like to dive in more. 424 is overall our operations for Social Services, Essential Services. We have no special requests. One of the biggest things is we're trying to maintain our staffing levels where we're at. It's very hard to juggle with our increased benefit packages, the mayor increases. All of our employees get that also, but you have 90% of our staff are funded at least by one grant, if not by five or six grants at one time. So our thing is just balancing so that we have enough here within our special revenues that come in and the grants to meet those increased costs, right? So we don't request anything from the general fund. So when you look at our budget, we're staying within those projections that I gave you on the first slide. This year, it was a huge surprise when we got our projections for Ring Central. Across the board, we were really told that we weren't going to have those, but we have put those costs in here. So when we had to put those in, we reduced somewhere else. We're going to have to find a grant to increase our supply, to pay for the supply increases because we don't have the amounts here. It's just not within the tax funds that we'll receive. 425 is the Public Health. This, like I mentioned, is the lab and also the interlocal agreement with Central Nevada Health District. Social Services pays for 50% of the contract with Central Nevada Health District, and the general fund pays for 50%. Why this is, is because when you look at Social Services Indigent Fund, it doesn't qualify for environmental health services. It qualifies for community health, infectious disease, those sorts of things. So when the Central Nevada Health District was implemented, it was decided we would do a split. I'm excited to announce that there is a reduction to our contract this year. Last year, it was 200, well, fiscal year 25, 224, 718, and this year, it's gone down to 189. So when you look at that, that'll be a direct split of 94.9 from general fund and 94.9 from the Indigent Fund. Housing, this is 100% grant-funded. We look at, we did use some opioid funds over the last year, and I've allocated a little bit here because they are doing the activities that are required to do by opioid settlement funds. So this is a great way to utilize those funds and not be using indigent dollars. There is a big concern. We did lose a grant. We were notified last week from HUD, Supportive Housing Program, that direct, that direct grant from HUD that comes through the continuum of care. The reason we lost that is because we are not a housing-first model. The board has never supported a housing-first model. What a housing-first model means is you are taking somebody directly from the streets. It doesn't matter their income. It does not matter their substance abuse, mental health. You put them in a house, then you decide how to help them. That is not something we have ever agreed upon within Churchill County since 2001 when I started here. And I've always said, we would actually be looking at taking the individual, wrapping the services around them, making them become with goal-oriented, then placing them. So this year, we did lose that funding. We have had that funding since 2001. Public Guardian, but per NRS 159, we are required to have Public Guardian Services. I am the Public Guardian for Churchill County. We have at this time 13 individuals that we oversee their care and finances for. This can go up. This can go down. You just never know when the court orders are going to come in. We had a new one on just Tuesday. And then this also supports the Public Administrator stipend of $40,000 a year. There's not been a request for increase this year. We did increase last year. Next one is the 430, Child Protective Services. This is the one that's the thorn in my side. No one can give me a projection for fiscal year '26, '27. This is a legislative-approved item. Usually, we get our estimates for all of our assessments in November, December. This year, they could not provide those. So we will be working So we will be working with legislature to watch those, look at those costs as they come forward. We will probably have to do a change within our budget per the requirements of statute before the final budget is completed because it is a legislative year. 260, 671 is our donations and gifts. This is a revolving account. We don't expend unless money comes in. Somebody provides a donation to us for Pay It Forward, say at the Life Center, our senior Pay It Forward program, we're going to receive those funds, we're going to pay these funds out. So this is just a revolving so that they could move around from year to year. We don't lose those funds over to the general. When you look at the Life Center, it's our full operations. It's just like essential services, it's managed the same way. We are bringing in the grant funds, we're looking at the match funds from that tax base that is received. Again, we had the increased cost of phones and internet over there. You know, when we did the direct line, we used to pay, it was just under $500 for our internet and phones of the Life Center. Now with the Ring Central and this new direct line, we're close to $1,000. So there was increased cost with this. It is a better service, I will say. The Life Center, prior to having the direct line, they had to log into a net extender that didn't work half the time to access anything, but it is working better. But it did come with an increased cost. But we have built that within the budget and within the projections of the revenue to be received. Any questions? I don't think I went over my time. I was trying.
Nope, you're right on time. Any questions or comments from border staff? Okay, thank you for your time, Shannon. We'll move on to District Attorney's Office and Child Support. It'll be DA Arthur Mallory.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, others present, I feel a little bit like I'm following the Energizer Bunny. I'm not sure I'll be able to keep up with that speed or the level of, or the quantity of information, but Mr. Mills is going to cover for me and he will, not only will he cover some things, but he'll answer any really hard questions that you have in my place. First of all, thank you very much to the commission. You, in fact, are the cornerstone of the quality of life we have in this county by the various programs that you provide, such as just was described in many other programs, and that's appreciated. That's why this is one of the best places in Nevada to live. So we appreciate the quality of our commissioners too, as compared to commissioners in other counties, which we're familiar with and I'm familiar with them in other states. You guys are absolute jewels and we appreciate that. And I'm saying that on purpose because we want you to give us money, but it's also, it's also, it's also a true statement. Commissioners, the people, the reason people come together to live in communities, the number one primary reason is safety. They want their homes to be safe, their streets to be safe, to feel comfortable with their children walking to school, all of the type of factors that in many places are forgotten as from a past era, but we still have them here in Fallon. That is guaranteed by, by two things in general. We have a very good population, we're very fortunate. The quality of our people here is outstanding. I can't say enough about that. But we also have, thanks to you, a very good infrastructure that supports our justice system. And people come and live together, like as I said, for the purpose of being safe. And that safety is provided by the folks on the street, who you'll hear from after we leave, and how these, how their job is carried forward in the courts, which is our office. So the one thing that the community has come to expect is a high level of public safety in our community, and we have that. We're very fortunate to have that and we intend to keep on having it, even though times present various challenges to us, including our state legislature. But we will, you know, adapt and overcome as we need to. At this time, if I may, I'm going to turn my time over to Mr. Mills, who will cover some interesting things in the budget and be able to answer any really hard questions you have. Okay? Mr. Mills.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Lane Mills for the record, Chief Deputy District Attorney, Churchill County. As you can see from our budget, we're not asking for any more people. And I just want to take you back in time to the year 1998. Our office had one less attorney in those 27 years. In 2010, we added another civil attorney. So we have grown our secretaries over those 27 years by two. And we've been able to keep up with our caseload because of efficiencies. Because we know attorneys are some of frankly, the most expensive employees the county has. And that's just the math. We are aware of that, we're acutely aware of that. And so we found ways to deal with our ever-increasing caseload every year. Some of those is hiring less expensive employees, like secretaries, so that our attorneys can be more efficient. And when that ran out, we go, we went, and we went digital. Became digital. And, and now, at some point, we need bodies just to fill courtrooms, commissioner meetings, library board meetings that are at the same time. And so, but we're acutely aware of the county's budget position. We hear about it, as I'm sure you do, from our employees every day when the newest CPI numbers come out. Or when they have to make their insurance payment, which is not included in the CPI numbers, it's gone up 20%. So our employees are hurting. We're acutely aware that when we're fashioning our budget and we're looking at what we need to spend, and we've done that for the last 27 years since Art has been DA. But there's some things that we have to deal with that are not in our control. And one of those, as we dealt with last time, is this weekend duties that the legislature has imposed on us. Those are external costs that we can't control. The legislature half-funded that. Unfortunately, they got some bad information that said we only do court one day a week on the, on the weekend. And while the court may only hold court one day on a week, everybody else involved in the court system has to go out and work, except for maybe the public defenders, who just have to show up on that day. The rest of us have to go, do work, open cases, run criminal histories, review probable cause sheets, prepare for court on the day that it happens. And so those are some things that we can't control, that you see in our budget for the weekend duty. Other things that we can't control is that the justice court has now gone to a four-day work week. And so that imposes some costs on our office. And we see that extra cost every time we have a Monday holiday. Because on a Friday, if they have a Friday off, we're still working on that Friday. And that's not an extra cost to us because we're still working. But when everybody's off on a Monday holiday, that's an extra cost to us. Because the way the court has it is they want to do court on a Saturday or a Friday and a Sunday. And then if you have somebody who's arrested at some point and they need to be seen Monday at 8:00 AM, well then that means that we have to come in and burn overtime for our employees either the day before, or we're going to have to tell our employees to come in at like 6:00 AM on that day and burn overtime. Our office hours is set by statute. And that is in the Nevada revised statutes. And so, so we're looking at some, we just figure that for those, we have September 1st, which is a Labor Day, it's a Monday. We have a Christmas, which is going to, we foresee additional callback time for that day. New Year's Day, MLK Day, President's Day, Memorial Day. This upcoming year, I think we're going to have Juneteenth, which is going to, you know, increase some overtime for us too, potentially. And so those are hard numbers to figure out because sometimes we have arrests and then we actually have to pay our employee overtime. Other times, we don't, but we do, what we will have is a hard cost of, I think, believe $744 in callback pay. And we're acutely aware that, you know, almost every thousand dollars, that's like a cost of living adjustment for an employee in the county. You know, and a couple of those, you add those up and that's, that hurts the entire county and it hurts our ability to give our employees something we need to give them to retain them as employees. So as I noted, we're not asking for another position. Last year, as Commissioner Gittle will remember, we asked for another civil deputy because of the ever-growing amount of civil work. And that's contracts, personnel issues, and by personnel issues, I mean like litigation personnel issues, HR issues. There's a whole variety of things that we asked for. We didn't get it. This year, we're not asking for it because we're aware of the county's budget problems. What we are asking for is we've had a bump in our data management contract service for Filevine. And for a little bit more money, we can add AI to that. It's a government AI, so it's protected. And, and what it's good at, and it's good on the civil side, not on the criminal side, because it's good at helping our civil staff draft contracts, review contracts. Like you can have a go and review contracts and see what there is to change. It will draft interrogatories for you, review interrogatories, all sorts of things in the civil world that will help our civil division be where they are. Like I said, we've only had, for the longest time, I mean, when I, when in 2020, when I was a law clerk, our civil deputy was Mark Fest. I don't know if all of you knew that, but he worked for our office as a civil deputy DA. And when I got here in 2005, it was Rusty Jardine was our civil guy. And we only added in 2010 and that spot is now taken by Jeff. But the county has grown a lot. And the amount of things that the county does as far as things that require attorney review has grown a lot. And so we think that this AI thing will help us kick the can down the road for a new civil position, a ways. We're not sure how much, it depends on how much the workload is, but we'll, we think it'll do that. Also, last year, I think you may or may not realize, we asked for more criminal positions because the public defenders got an extra, I think, five people. They've added one in that time and that was just recently. And we'd asked for that because frankly, you know, they compromised just a mere portion of our caseload, a significant minority of our caseload. And we figured they'd have nothing else better to do, but they haven't filled that position except for, I don't know, within the last month. And I think there's still more in the onboarding process, so it's hard for us to ask for that position, not having, seeing what the results are. And so for this year, we're not going to ask for that. We would like to thank the commissioners for the new roof that our building has. I spent a lot of time talking with the contractor on that roof, who told me everything that was wrong with the old roof, about how it wasn't up to code. And we actually anticipate seeing probably some real energy savings for the summer months because I guess there was real issues with the old roof. And so, and you know, and, and you may hear our, some of our staff grumble in the winter months about how lane is the temperature meany. Because really, we have been very cognizant of our costs. You know, people come in in the morning, it's 60 degrees in our office.
Lane runs around turning the thermostat down. That's why people hate him.
We have locks on them now. But I mean, we are very cognizant of our costs. We have not, we've added some things that we just have to have in our budget. You know, there's fees for notaries, there's training costs, there's educational costs for attorneys, those all tend to go up. And so we haven't really asked for anything large and happy to answer any questions for you folks.
Any questions from border staff? Go ahead, Jim. You got the one without the light.
Check. There we go. Just a quick comment. I just wanted to say how much I appreciated the District Attorney's Office meeting with me and talking through some of these things. And if there's, there's no question of the need in terms of position. And I wanted to put that on the record and say that that needs to be something that is definitely looked at the next year, but as we go into the budget development next year. But wanted to really say how much I appreciate you guys taking a high elevation look and looking at the needs that we have across the county. And, you know, if life were fair, it would be easy, right? But we know that's not how it operates and, and I just wanted to reinforce, we love our public defender's office and that, you know, nothing negative or slanting towards them, they're awful good people. But it is striking when you consider all the work the District Attorney's Office does on the civil side, representing us, you know, with Joe and Jeff relative to the lands bills, the regulations, all of those components. And then also on the criminal side, they have to basically go in and, and look at every, every case, not just the cases that are going into the public defenders. And those that charges aren't even brought, that's still labor and output. And so, you know, I just wanted to reinforce that I do believe that there's a need here and I appreciate them being willing to come up with efficient ideas of how to put that off for, for a year. It's greatly appreciated.
And I just wanted to, it's something I forgot, you know, with this new four-day work week of the court, the court's now doing what it didn't used to do, which is trials on Wednesday mornings. And, you know, that creates a conflict with our drug court, because drug court is on Wednesday mornings. And so especially now that we're short-staffed, that creates some staffing issues with us. As that gets more and more busy, that may create a body issue on the criminal side where we have two courts going at the same time and that may create a body issue. We haven't seen it yet. It's not something that good personnel management can't address for the time being. But just looking down the road, I foresee that as being a real issue.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you guys for your time. We will jump to our nine o'clock Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Richard Hickox.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. Thanks for letting us come and talk to you about our budget proposal. Before we get into anything, I did want to take a couple of minutes and just address a couple of items there, so you understand where we're coming from when we present these budgets, or this budget to you. We understand the budget situation that the county is in. We understand the instruction that was given to us. And so we took that into consideration when we wrote our budget. The thing is that what we also had to take into consideration is the constant phone calls and constant emails and stopping us when we're uptown having dinner or at an event with our family, telling us we need more law enforcement on the street, speeders are on our streets, we're not feeling safe in our streets because people are speeding, I got my stuff broken into and stolen, that kind of thing. As well as the requirements, federally and state requirements to, for mandated observations and interactions with inmates, to make sure that they're safe, that their welfare is there. And so we had to take all of that into consideration. And so what we did was we presented to you guys a budget that we feel at this point addresses some of those needs. And then we're going to let you guys, as obviously as is your job to do, set the priorities for the community. And so we're presenting to you today a budget that we feel meets those needs and allows us to do the job that we are hired to do, that I was elected to do. And so it's not a, it's not a thumb at anyone, so if you guys feel that way, based off of the acts that we have, I apologize for that, it's not that. It is simply, hey, this is what we need to do, the job that we're, I was elected to do and that these guys were hired to do. We are currently running the same number on the streets as far as patrolmen that we ran when I started at the Sheriff's Office in 1999. And that is a sergeant and two deputies. If you drive around our community from that time to now, there's houses and buildings and businesses in places where there were fields. There are businesses in places where there were not businesses prior to this. And so that increase means that there's an increase in people, it means that there's an increase in calls for service, increase in people coming to jail. And so those costs have gone up, as you guys are aware from, we had asked also And so, we are asking that they be bumped up to a wage that does allow them to be slightly higher than the people that they're supervising. I think that that's fair. There's some other issues or items, if you wish for me to go line by line down this, I can, or you can read through that, but that's the gist of what we're asking for. We are responsible for maintaining a jail, we're responsible for feeding the inmates and handling those inmates that are in there, and so the cost has gone up for that. And so, but the, some of the, what you'll see as far as increases is not a wish list, it is a truing up of those accounts. It's a truing up of what we are expected to spend because contracts have gone up, the cost of feeding those inmates, of medicating those inmates, of dealing with those inmates has gone up. And the reality is, is that we have inmates in our jail right now that are mental health patients that are there for months and months and months. They're extremely labor-intensive for our, for our deputies because we have to have 15 to 30-minute watch on them. When they start to act up or start to damage the jail, we have to go in and stop them. When they become covered in, in feces, which they like to do, or start trying to cover our, our cameras with their own feces, we can't allow that to happen just because it's a health issue, right? We can't allow them to just sit in that. So, we have to go in and deal with that, take them out. And so, it's a labor-intensive issue, and it requires a lot of PPE and some other, some other health issues. So, that's kind of where we're at with the, with the Board for Prisoners. There's some other stuff, like I said, on the contracts that's gone up. Gasoline, obviously, fluctuates, so we'd ask for that. For investigations, we did ask for a slight increase. And part of that is, is we have a contract with the Washoe County Crime Lab. And if I'm talking fast, or I feel like I'm talking fast, it's just so I don't take other people's time, and also to give you guys a chance at the end to ask any questions that you guys might need. And we, with Washoe County Crime Lab doing most of our lab stuff, they have now come back and said that we're not doing certain testing anymore, which leaves us sending stuff out of state. And so, with the recent attempted homicide that we investigated, we had to send the items out of state, increasing cost in that. It's obviously needed because we have to be able to prosecute this case, and so we don't have an option. With Washoe County not doing those testing anymore, we don't have any options but to do that. Memberships, I pay for the memberships for associations out of my own pocket. I don't ask the county to do that, I pay for it out of my own pocket. But I can't ask the rest of the administration to pay for those memberships out of their own pocket. And those memberships are needed for them to go and to get current training, be current on, and get current interactions with other sheriffs and, and people in their rank on jail issues, technology, and that kind of thing. So, that's where the membership has gone up. Office supplies, as again, you guys all know, this is a truing up of our account. Office supplies have all gone up with us being more spread out, we have to have more supplies spread out for those offices. Jail repairs, with the increase in mental health patients that we have, jail repairs seem to happen. And with them being not competent or found not competent, there's nobody to pay for those but us. And so, that's one of those truing up accounts that we have. Out-of-state extraditions is kind of an odd one. It's money that is paid back to the county, and we have it as a line item. Once we expend that, the county continues to reimburse us, and it goes into general fund. It does not come back into our account. So, that's kind of an odd account that at some point we might want to look at. But the reserve unit, as some of you guys are aware, the reserve unit is something that we had for a long time at the sheriff's office. We, what it is, is it's a civilian that comes in, they receive a certain level of training. Then they can accompany a law enforcement officer out on the street, and they can act as, as backup, they can't take action on their own. But it does provide us with the multiplier for the, for force. They can't obviously go out and handle things on their own, but it does provide us with backup, and it does get us better interactions with the public. It also has created a hiring pool for us in the past. We have a number of people from our office that were reserves in the past, that they decided they liked it enough to become full-time with us. And so, we're asking that we can get some money put back into that account, or at least increase that account so that we can start that program back up, so that we don't end up with some of the situation that Chris Ross is aware of, with us trying to hire people and people, the applicants either not showing up or, or washing out completely. Furniture and fixtures, we're asking for a truing up of that, and a little bit of an increase in that, simply because our chairs are used 24/7. We're not like a regular office where people come in, they'll sit in them for eight to 10 hours, and then they're gone. We have people in and out of those chairs and using the office equipment all day long. My office is an exception, but some of the others are that way, and so our chairs wear out quickly. With the duty belts that the guys have on, when they sit down, they end up tearing up the chairs, the extra weight on those chairs ends up breaking them. Dispatch is in their chairs 24/7, and so they need someplace comfortable to sit, otherwise we start having health issues. So, that's kind of where we're at with this. We are asking for some cars to replace some of the aging cars. We're still running a 2005, 2003 pickup that we have to seem like put a new battery or new work into every time we want to start it, and some other vehicles that are over a decade old. And so, we're asking for three vehicles so that we can start to cycle those out. And I'm open to any questions that you might have. I did bring my full administration here today, so if you have questions for any of them, they'll be free to answer those questions as well.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions or comments from border staff?
I have one question. I guess I don't understand, I, I would like you to tell me, how, how do you become a sergeant? Is it time, is it time and merit, or, or from sergeant to captain?
Time, merit, and training.
And it's just automatic, or?
No. No. If we have an opening for that, then we can do testing for that, and you can promote up. But you, there are certain requirements in our standard operating policies that you have to meet before you're even open for that. And so, we have to have an opening in that for someone to even apply for that position. It's not just an automatic, you've been here 10 years, plus you've got this level of training, you're now a sergeant.
Is it sergeant versus how many deputies there are, or?
Yes. And we're actually in need of, but we did not put it in this budget. We felt like we could, we would hold off until next year. We are in need of more supervision in the jail, that was what we had put in for in the last budget, and it got cut. And so, we're asking for just the positions back so we can get deputies on the floor because we need bodies. We can be as efficient as we want, and we have bought programs to be as efficient as we can, but in the end, it still boots on the ground for us that, that matter.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Speaking on the contracted services, I understand that the, the crew that runs the board there in the jail, that's part of that line item, correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's that amount that broke in? Is it the entire amount?
No, sir. There, there, we have other contracts for Motorola, for a variety of other contracts that we have that are part of that, that we're expecting a slight increase in, because I'm talking with them, they said that they're, they haven't figured it out yet, but they're coming, so.
But what portion of that contracted services is the?
I couldn't answer that really quick, but I can get that answer for you.
No, I'm just, was wondering what the?
I'll get that answer and get an email to you, sir.
Because, you know, you, your department does have the largest budget.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, penny here, penny there, slice a couple pennies over there, and move them over there to make a penny, so. Just looking at it that way. And then, what is the sta, what do you feel is the status of your vehicle fleet? Like, is it, what if, you know, you were asking for three?
Yes, sir.
What if we only gave you two? I mean, is that?
We would make that work.
You know?
It takes about a year for us to order a vehicle and get it fully staffed, fully outfitted.
Six months?
About a year.
A year?
Because Ford lets us know when they can open up the police package ordering portion, and it's a very narrow window. And so, right now, it's closed. And so, if we were to order that through Ford, or if we were to go to Chevy, which is the request of the, the county, that window's still also very narrow. The only reason I'm speaking of Ford is because I have more experience ordering the Fords right now than I do the Chevy. So, if we were to order a Ford, they have a very narrow window that we can order that police package vehicle in. Once we get that, and then they get it built up, and then they outfit it and send it to us, we still have to finish the outfit. But it's almost a year from the time that we place that order, or we get approved from you guys to place the order, to placing that order and then getting that vehicle. And so, we're asking for them now, we won't get them until probably the end of that fiscal year. For our patrol vehicles right now, our patrol vehicles are in pretty good shape. We have, we have them, but they're starting to age. We have 2018s on the line, but we have some other vehicles that are, we would like to see pushed out just before they start to have issues. Our 2018s right now are having a lot of motor issues. We spent, I think, $4,500 to rebuild one of them. We have another 2019, I think, or 2020 in the shop right now, that the motor has been taken out, replaced, and I think the new one's probably still going to go back into it. And so, we don't, we don't want to run into the situation where we can't respond to calls because our cars start to break down. And so, we're just looking to feature-proof that a little bit. But like I said, we have 2013s, 2005s, and 2012s that we'd like to out, outsource to other people within the county if they wish, or get rid of completely.
When's the last year that you bought a vehicle? I guess they start in patrol, correct, when you buy one?
Yes, sir.
When's the last time you bought a?
I think it was two years ago.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
One question. The light doesn't work, so I can't ever tell if it's on or not. It's on now. How many vehicles are on patrol at any given moment, per time, on average?
Three to four.
Three to four. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from border staff?
How many vehicles are in patrol, like assigned to patrol, they only get used for patrol?
I think it's 10.
And then how long does a patrol vehicle set when not being used?
12 hours?
12 hours. So, every 12 hours, one, every 10, all 10 vehicles get used somehow?
Pretty much.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions?
I've got a question, Chris Ross for the record. This may be a question more for Sherri and Jamie. On, on the budget on page 133 of 460, the other salaries and wages, last year, there was a budget of 3.85 million, and this year, it looks like the budget is down to 3.67 million, but they're asking for two more people. Are those people included in that 3.6? Page, page 33, one, sorry, 133. I'm just looking at the side of my computer here. Yeah, so, just, just now that you're on the page, just to repeat my question, last year, it was 3.85 million. This year, it's down to 3.67 million, but they're asking for two more people. So, are those two people included in that 3.67 million?
Yes.
Okay.
And they also got a decrease in their wages because they are not paying their part of the purse increases for something.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I get to be one of those lucky people who makes less a year.
Any other questions?
I guess that just created a question for me in the jail. Are you fully staffed in the jail? What?
We have, we have currently two openings right now that we're working to fill. We have one that will start March 3rd, and then we are testing on Saturday. What we have right now, I would consider an absolute bare minimum. We are barely able to, and in some situations, we're not able to meet the standards that are required by national and federal requirements for inmate, or contacts and observations. There's stuff that's set forth by courts, by state law and federal law, and we're not able to necessarily meet all of those all the time because our, the deputies that are in the jail are dealing with the inmates, they're intaking inmates, they're taking inmates to court, whether it's inside the building or over to the other courts, they're doing transports to medical, they're doing a variety of other topic, or things within the jail. And so, sometimes those jail checks are not always met, and so that puts us at risk. And that's why I say we're at a very absolute bare minimum. If something happens, those checks are even more delayed, which puts us in a liability situation, puts you guys in a liability situation, which is why we're asking for more people.
Does two just help the cause, or does two, like, make a full staff?
The other two would help us.
It just helps?
It would help us.
It does not make you completely staffed within the jail?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was where I was saying, we were trying to balance the need versus where we're at with the budget and not.
Okay. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
We'll move on to recorder, Tasha Hesse.
Good morning. Everyone looks fabulous today. I'm definitely asking for money. The recorder's office, I am asking to increase my budget by $6,738. Included in that increase is an additional $3,500 to the mining map expenditure fund. I did want to clarify one thing that I didn't express clearly in the department tour. We do collect fees for mining maps, and per the NRS, out of the fees collected, we are to pay a surveyor to plot those. Currently, we have collected $25,000, and we've paid out $6,000 to the surveyor. So, we do collect fees. So, this increase is, it's not an unfunded mandate, I just wanted to clarify that. This year's just been an odd year, and we'll see how it goes in the future. So, it might be a line item that we increase and decrease year over year. The remaining $3,300 in my budget is, is to bring my budget up to balance. I look at my, the budget, and every year, I spend approximately the same thing across the board, and so, this is just truing up those balances for each of the line items in service and supplies. The other request that I have is in wages and benefits by $3,844, and that is because Amy Lowry has currently outclassed her current job description. I worked with Chris and Kim. Currently, the recorder's office has a senior recordation clerk and a recordation clerk. You can't have two seniors, but they both are doing the exact same work, so it, it just wasn't right. And so, what we did was, we kept the senior recordation clerk at grade 43, but changed the title to recordation clerk, and moved to recordation clerk to recordation clerk trainee. And so, this will, this $3,800 is to move Amy up to recordation clerk. Very interesting. But that is how that all worked out. The other, under recorder, microfilm and records, which is budget 135, I'm asking for an increase of $440 in that fund. Any questions? Oh, come on, ask a question.
Any questions or comments from border staff?
I'm good to ask some questions.
You are good at that.
Quick question for Chris. Did you just provide the information for the reclass, or did you guys actually do a desk audit? We just provided the information.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll make two questions. How come you can't have two people of that same classification? Is that a county thing or a state thing?
It's a county thing. It's, there's an implied that if you're a senior, there is a junior underneath you, and to have two seniors without anybody underneath them is setting a bad precedent for the rest of the departments.
Does, do we have to worry about losing a person because they can't make that position, or?
Well, I think that's the intent of the reclassification, so that, so you're basically changing the title and working with the grades and the steps to, to kind of keep the, the cost the same, allowing somebody to get a bit of an increase. But doing the, the tasks of a senior, and, and Tasha has put together new job descriptions for both of those to help kind of clean that up, because if you look at the current job descriptions, between a senior and a regular recordation clerk, there's only one thing different that the senior does. So, we, i, i, if, if this is considered, we're going to have to bring the job descriptions in front of you in, in May and June to get all those approved. But having two seniors at the same level without any juniors is, to me, is, is bad precedent, and we try not to do that in, throughout any of the departments.
I understand.
And also, in the recorder's office, because we're small, my office doesn't have, like all the other offices, have a chief deputy or an office manager, and the workload that would essentially go to that person has been given to both of them over the years. And so, there is an off, there's an off balance here. So, this is to kind of true that up.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, just additional comment, just in terms of process, this is neither in support of or in opposition of this or any other reclasses that are coming. The, the, the proper procedure would be a request for a reclass, then HR goes in and actually does an audit of the actual duties that the position is currently performing with that staff member to, to confirm, is this staff member actually working out of class? to confirm, is this staff member actually working out a class from the job description that was provided? And if so, then recommendation on that. And ultimately, the recommendation then comes back to the commission. And you guys would make the decision, you know, we will feel that this is working out a class and they merit a change because we want to do a restructuring. Or as managers, we're not supposed to have staff working out a class. That's part of the conversation as well. In which case the commission then would say, well, we need you to, you know, shift some stuff over to the, maybe the junior is doing to the senior position. But that's how the process should work. And so I think you need to consider that, that there hasn't been a desk audit done in that. That's not suggesting that you couldn't, as you get to decision making time, direct HR to pursue desk audits, even going into the next budget cycle and then have these brought back with recommendations independently upon that. But that's how the process should actually work, is it's done through a desk audit where you've got neither the department nor, you know, you got independent like Kim and HR that then does the review and puts that all together and then brings those facts to you. That's how it's done at the state as well.
Thank you.
Any other? Go ahead.
During our department tour, you commented about how you wanted to clean up those record books. Right? Remember that conversation?
Yeah.
Did you put, is any of that work in your budget?
No. It was in the budget last year, but then it got cut. And because of where we are countywide budget, we can't.
And then just for your, from my knowledge, how important is to make sure we maybe get started on that? Is that super important? Is it like a 10-year plan?
I think like in the next three to five years, we have to get started on. We have to take the bullet and start getting those books, you know, redone and preserved. It has to be done, but I think we can definitely wait three more years.
What's the minimum amount of money that you would need each year to get started? That makes it worth someone's time?
Yeah. So last, when I started it last year, I asked for $30,000 and it was a five-year plan. And so I would say we would, to make it worthy of anyone's time, you would at least do $20,000 and just slowly do it year over year. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from border staff? Okay. Thank you, Tasha. Move on to assessors. Denise.
Good morning, everyone. Denise Felton, Churchill County Assessor for the record. The assessor's office has had a staff of eight full-time employees, which includes the assessor for 20 years. The workload of the assessor's office only grows as the county parcel count and population grows. In 2005, Churchill County had just over 12,000 parcels. Today Churchill County has just under 14,000 parcels, and the number of improved parcels has also increased over that time. By utilizing modern software applications, our office completes fewer administrative tasks such as maintaining paper files, which allows us to emphasize on appraisal tasks, data collection and analysis. After the increase in PERS and group health insurance, the total increase in the assessor's salary expenses from the prior years is 1.75%. The salary portion actually decreased. I had a senior person retire this year over the last year. And so overall, we have no additional requests for 2025, 2026. I'm happy answering questions.
Any questions or comments from border staff?
During our department tour, you mentioned how important the position of the deed and title clerk was. You've had some time go by without the deed and title clerk.
I have someone else having to do that position. That's not doing appraisal, that's doing deed and title.
Okay. Is it, can you see a detrimental effect to the department?
It will be here shortly when I start reappraisal.
Okay. Because the, all the appraisers need to be in the field for a period of time?
And yeah, doing reappraisal because we're statutory driven. We have, the county's broken into five reappraisal areas. And so by statute, we have to reappraise those areas or every, all properties, sorry, every five years. So when we get into that cycle, it's, we're going to have to really just shift because we haven't been able to fill that position.
And then on the deed and title position, is there time limits? Like if they have work to do? Can it pile up?
No. So you're talking about changing names on a property. Those, I mean, if you don't do them by the next week.
Yeah. Are we under a time limit to get that done?
Correct. Yes. That's updating the names on the tax rule. So that affects everything from, you know, lending, appraisals, outside appraisals. If our data is not kept up to date, we will get a phone call.
So like maybe a 48-hour window?
I mean, by the next week.
No, I'm talking about to get the work done? Like what's the window? Like is it 48 hours? You probably need to have this stuff updated like?
Like I said, usually that records the one week and we have to have it updated by the next week.
Okay.
Because we have to wait for the recorder's office to upload that type, that information for the week before. And so usually it's the next week.
So when the appraisers go out, there's no one else left in the office, but maybe you?
There's only a few. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so we try to rotate that out so we don't leave the office empty because of course we still have to help people coming into the office. So like I said, we work on a very shoestring as it is. And so, and like I said, we haven't, we've never increased our staff. We've just used technology to cover those responsibilities.
And in technology, there is no more technology to alleviate the workload?
Not that.
Using everything?
And there's certain things that, you know, technology is great, but you still need an appraiser. You still have to have somebody be an appraiser. You can't have software to do that. Same thing with the deed and title stuff. It's like there's no software to replace the title companies. Somebody has to do the research and actually do the work, do the title work on that. And that's essentially what my deed and title person is, is a title person. They have to read legal descriptions. They have to make sure they meet the standards, the notary requirements. That's a physical person to look at that and make that judgment call.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. You can't have software to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chris Ross for the record. Just a point of clarification to make sure that the board understands. The assessor's office is not doing away with the deed and titleist position. That position is in the queue of the six-gap positions that we have. And I believe it's either next up or one after that. So it just happens to be stuck in that queue right now and that position will be filled. And they will not be doing without. So I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of that.
Thank you for that clarification, Chris. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for your time. Move on to clerk treasurer, Linda.
Good morning. Linda Rothery, clerk treasurer for the record. Okay. I'm, I'll start with my clerk treasurer budget. For fiscal year '26, we are going to be starting with a decrease in payroll and benefits. However, the budget that's in front of you does not reflect that. I have two employees that will be retiring and will have a significant amount of savings within that payroll. This is due to longtime employees that are at the top or near the top that will be leaving and then bringing in the rehires at a step one. The estimated, thank you, Chris, for helping me. It's like the estimated cost savings in my budget will be around $27,000 next year. And with that being said, I am requesting a reclassification of one staff member in my, from deputy clerk treasurer to election technician. This staff member completed the required training to date. However, when once put into this position, they will require training and handle more technical administration duties. The training is required by the state for election staff. This is new. So we are, in doing that, we have done what we need to do to get her all up and running. Some of the duties that she will be doing is going to be, she, well, will be obviously assisting in conducting the elections. She will be coordinating the database for the elections, and this is a huge job. The, she, currently she maintains the voter registration database, which is a lot with, you know, encompass of that. She'll be handling all the mail ballots that go out to overseas members as well as our local members. She will have lead direction when she's recruiting all the poll workers because we need to have poll workers to help me do elections. And, I mean, and more. So this is, these responsibilities are built into this position to take that off of my plate. We are a small county and I have, there's seven of us, including me in my office. But I have two people that can do elections. I have two people that can do my treasurer's side, and then we've got two people that are doing boards now. We've managed to keep, you know, working with that and the amount of staff just so that we can get all our statutory required things done. The position will increase by $6,503.92. And this is all estimate as Jim stated. We haven't done backup to all of this documentation. I started collecting it to help, you know, Chris and I was, we were going to try to work together on that. However, time kind of came to a constraint. So this is all in an estimate. And then there still would be a $20,000 savings within that budget. The services and supplies, I'm not asking for anything new. All I am doing is moving 2,000 from one line item to the other line item because I'm coding it there. So it's just going to cover that. My election budget, I'll go to that unless you have questions on the other one.
The election technician? Is it a full-time position?
Yes.
Okay. So she'll, okay, thank you.
Chris, oh, sorry. Chris Ross for the record. So should the board decide to move forward with some of these new positions? Come May and June, I'll be working together with Linda to draft job descriptions and things like that. And then all that comes to the board for review and approval at the same time as we're doing pay tables, which will change this year because of PERS. And so all that will be presented to you for, so that you can make a final approval on the actual job description itself. And again, in the meantime, as Jim had mentioned, we will do the desktop audit the way that it needs to be done to make sure that when we're looking at the job description, that the appropriate tasks are there, that the appropriate grade and scale and everything like that is in line with what a position like that would be needed.
So for the record, Jim, to be clear, the election technician is not an existing position. This would create a new position.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other questions just on the clerk's side that will move to elections?
So if you create that position, you're not going to bring someone on to fill her position, what she is doing now? Because she's sort of doing multiple things.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Let's jump to elections.
Okay. Elections. The, let's see. I have a couple of things on the elections. Just to give you a little history, the state is moving to a new printer. It's called a ballot marking device, but it is basically going from one printer and replacing the VV Pats, which is the printer that goes next to the voting machine when you go vote. This is the direction the state has moved. And we had multiple counties actually purchased this and used it in our 2024 election cycle. And I felt that holding off till 2026 elections just would give me a little bit more time. I can see how the other counties, you know, were doing. I wanted to wait for funding and so on and so forth. So we put, I split it between two fiscal years so it wouldn't be such a hard hit on one year. If so, not expecting reimbursement, but will get reimbursement. I just don't know how much. The total cost to Churchill is 48,000, I mean, yeah, 48,600. And so what's on this budget is half of that. Last year, the board approved the first half of it, and this is going to be the second half of it. And then that way I can get everything in this year if you approve this. And then that way we can get training and do what we need to do and get ready for the 2026 elections. I have talked to the state and for reimbursement. And the secretary of state, just so you know, we get reimbursement for a good portion of our election budget as it is. And the just for last calendar year, for the two primaries and our general election, its total reimbursements back to my budget is $147,000. So that's, that's great. So the secretary of state and legislation this year, they're asking for additional funds to reimburse counties for the purchase of the new ballot marking devices. Technology and with elections is an ongoing thing. We've had changes throughout our time. 2004, we went from punch cards to touchscreens and then we replaced and got the newer version of touchscreens in 2016, I'd like to say. So each, you know, every time we have an elections, it's, the technology is going to change. And the recommendation, everything's certified through the state of Nevada. So we can't just go out, I can't just go out and say, oh, I want this and then have that required, you know, and then replace it. Everything has to be certified and approved by the state. And that being said, it's like, it is, I don't know how much we're going to get reimbursement. But the talks that we've been having, the state will go to the legislatures and they are going to be asking for reimbursement. So it could be in 2004, it was 100% paid for by HAVA funds, which is a federal fund. In 2016, it was state funds that the secretary of state went to the legislatures to get that money. However, it was a half, county pays half, county, and then the state pays half, which was definitely more substantial, the amount of money, because that was actually new voting, I mean, the upgraded voting machines and touchscreens. This year is printers. It is a smaller amount, however, it's still, you know, it's still going to hit budgets. And so we'll have to pay for them before we get reimbursed because then we have to apply for reimbursements. The only other thing I had was I, my, I have two line items in my election budget that are huge and over budget because I only budget X amount. But we have so much that goes through them. So my election cost handles all the mail ballots. I mean, the printing, the mailing, because we have a service and everything. So we pay everything out of that. And then I've got publications. Publication costs are huge. And we do get reimbursements for all of that, which I just explained. However, what I felt, because in times, I don't know if funding will ever get pulled. I'd like to kind of catch my expenses up a little bit at a time as we go on, just to make sure if I don't get as much reimbursement that I can, you know, I don't want to go over budget. That's what my point is. I don't anticipate. We've been getting reimbursements from the whole time I've been here, which, you know, I've been here for nearly 24 years. So any questions on that?
Is the election technician, is it reimbursed by the state, that position?
No.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll move to Rat Pack.
Team effort.
Bringing in the big guns. So for some clarification, Rat Pack is an old acronym that was used by our predecessors. It stood for Recorder, Assessor, Planning, Treasurer and Clerk. So that was, that's the technology fund where that gathers all this. It's a standalone fund. So sorry, Denise Felton, Churchill County Assessor for the record. The primary source of revenue for the technology fund is 2% collection fee from the assessor's unsecured tax rule. And that's NRS 361530. The fund also consists of technology fees collected from the recorder, planning map fees and a technology fee from clerk services. This standalone fund allows our offices to acquire technology such as hardware and software. Expenses for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year also include a Sanborn aerial flight of reappraisal areas four and five. Equipment and record, sorry, equipment and records, retention, scanning for the recorder. Currently, the assessor- Currently, the assessor's office uses Microsoft Excel and Access to manage our new construction and reappraisal assignments. This process is manual and limited, and we've been looking for a better solution. The Apex Geo viewport application offers custom workflows to assign and manage tasks, and will enable the assessor's office staff to view street-level imagery, oblique imagery, property sketches, and property data for a property, for each property simultaneously. The software also includes a mobile application and an inbound activity module to better assist taxpayers. The functionality offered by this application is not offered by any property appraisal vendor, so it's something separate. The assessor's office has used the Apex Eye Look About sketching application for over 20 years. Apex has partnered with our appraisal software vendor, DevNet. Apex has asked our office to be the pilot for the integration for this piece, and as a pilot county, we've been offered 50% discount on the integration fee. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, guys. If it's all right with everyone, we're going to jump to JPO before this break, just since she's here and she can go right now.
For the record, Lalo is somewhere in the state rooting for a girl state championship basketball team, which includes his daughter, which is pretty cool.
Good luck to them. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
So Julia Mello, Deputy Chief of Juvenile Probation. So we are just requesting the change of normal salary and benefits. We're not requesting anything else. We've been able to work within our budget.
Any questions or comments from boarder staff?
Real quick question. Can you comment on how the new camera system has worked, was funded, I don't know if that was this fiscal year or the previous fiscal year, but it's fairly new.
Yeah, it was recently installed. So far, I think it is working well.
Is it able to search and do all those things that they promised?
Yes, yeah, no, I know Brandon Byrd knows more about the system through the detention part. For upfront, it's been working well.
I do have one question here. So that, it's a 12.17% increase on that, is that from that specialist position that we hired on? Yes? Okay, thank you, that answers that.
And can you give us a progress on that position, like how effective it has, has been?
So far, I think it's been successful. Obviously, it just started, he started in January, but he's at the library every day, and there's been positive feedback from the librarian. And then he's helping track truanceys and things like that, and we're starting to get him trained on parent projects and Y-try, and then we can get him into the schools in teaching parents.
I will tell you that when I was going through the budget, the librarian did say that it's been very helpful in her presentation here, so.
And I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent a week ago or two weeks ago, somewhere in there, and they're very excited by the position. They're still working on getting the cooperative agreement. There's been some illness over there, so they're a little bit behind on getting that to us, but they're fully vested and still on board with that position, so I think it's been great all the way around.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
I guess we're, we're going to take our break now. We're ahead of schedule, so we'll go ahead and take a break. We'll reconvene at, would 10 o'clock work for everyone, and hopefully Mel will be here? That works?
Juvenile probation is that her, too?
That was her.
For everything.
Say again? Any questions or comments for Mel? Thanks for coming down early, Mel.
Short and sweet, thank you very much.
Then the presentation did. We'll go ahead and, we'll jump to library, Kathy Thorson.
Considering there's a, considering there's a negative in front of your number.
There is that, right? Kathy Thorson, I'm the library director. I just want to start by saying thank you to the, to the staff and to the commissioners for allowing us to have that porch position. That has changed the dynamic in that library with staff and with my time and with the patrons. It has been so well-received, and he's such a great kid. It's just amazing that the attitude and that the feeling in that, in that building now has really come back to what a library should be. So first of all, thank you for that, because that was, that was a mountain to climb, so I appreciate that from all of you. I only, I did the same as Mel, I kind of picked his brain before I set this up. I only asked for increases just in stuff that I can't control, like contracted services or envisionware or online printing, that kind of stuff. Our co-op, we, I contacted them a few weeks ago, and they didn't know what, what the increase would be, so I kind of bumped that up a little bit. And we, we kept our programming the same, we've kept our book budgets the same, so I really only asked for stuff that I, I have no idea of what it's going to cost. So, do you have questions? Do you have anything I need to answer?
Any questions or comments? Look at you two, on a roll here. Okay, thank you for your time.
Oh, sweet. Thank you.
We will jump back to a break now. I guess we don't have anyone else. Stay here, Chris.
Was he coming?
Is he coming though, or no?
I don't know.
HR, you're up.
Chris Bros, Churchill County, Human Resources, for the record. So I have three budgets. The, I don't want to say the most important, but the, the more intricate is the 175, the Human Resources budget. Overall of our budget, if you include everything, our budget is going to be going down about $8,200. The big savings there, we're saving just a little over $10,000 in our wages. The reason, that is because of the restructuring that we did when Kim took over as manager, and we replaced her position with the specialist position. And although we have a savings of $10,000 in our salaries, we still have an increase of $1,000 in benefits, and that's all related to PERS and the 5% health, or the, the health insurance increase. Other things that are related linearly to the salaries are, are dropping a little bit. Our biggest expense is our computer software that we use for tracking employees, onboarding. We are in year four of our NeoGov software for insight, and we are in year one of two, we just redid that of our onboarding. So two years from now, we're going to be on the same, on the same schedule of both of those. That was the increase that we had, that was about a $2,477 increase. So our services and supplies went up about $800, because we tried to balance some of that cost increase with some of the other items that we have in there. So again, all in all, the, the budget itself is an $8,255 saving. I'd be happy to answer any questions with regards to that.
Any questions or comments for Chris on HR? Thank you, Chris. We'll jump to fire department, Alex.
Oh, I still have two more.
Oh, I thought there was no change. Go for it.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to see if there's any questions there. We have, we have our, our 177, or 176 budget, which is, excuse me here, that's our personnel and staff development. We're not making any changes to that, that's still at the 15% decrease that we had from the previous year. And really what that is for is that's our training budget and our education incentive. So if anybody goes out and gets their associate's degree or their bachelor's degree, and it is applicable to the job that they are doing, then they can apply to us for a bonus. And then finally, we have our personnel benefit services. What we use that for is pre-employment expenses such as
What we use that for is pre-employment expenses such as physicals, drug tests, things like that. And that is also where we pay for our employee appreciation events. Again, that stays the same as the fifteen percent reduction that we had last year. So, if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions on those two? Okay, thank you, Chris. Jump to you, Alex.
Good morning. Alex Haffner with the Fallon Churchill Fire Department. My budget's pretty much stayed the same. I was asking for four increases. My increase would be in fifty-five-eighty. It would be a ten percent increase, and that's just basically supplies and costs of the materials we use for firefighting going up. I believe we're going to be really close, if not go over, on that account this year. The next account would be physicals. In the past, it was always ten thousand. It got dropped last year with the budget cuts, and this year I'm trying to bring it up to ten thousand. We have twenty-three physicals scheduled for this year, and I believe we'll need that amount to cover those physicals. As these firemen are getting a little bit older, after fifty, they have to get a physical every year instead of every other year, so this year just kind of lines up with that. The next account would be fifty-seven-sixty, which is equipment repairs. I asked for a ten percent increase in that. We're still buying a bunch of spare parts for those two new engines. We just like to have it on hand so the engines aren't down more than they need to be. And then my last account that I'm asking for to increase is fifty-nine-seventy-nine, other non-capital. It would be a five percent increase, and that's due to turnout costs going up. I kept all my wages and retirement and everything the same as I did last year, and that's due to Mitch Young retiring in July. I'll be really close on the budget this year because they're planning on hiring another fire marshal while Mitch is still there, so it'll come into that wage, but depending on who gets hired, if it's somebody in-house, we might be able to make up some of that fund. So, I'm hoping that it all balances out, and then if I have to come see you guys, I will. But at this moment, I think we're going to be able to make it. And that's pretty much the fire department budget.
Any questions or comments for Alex? Okay, thank you for coming down early.
Thank you, guys.
We'll jump to Central Nevada Health District since you guys are here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record. Darren Winkleman with the Central Nevada Health District. Our budget this year remains pretty flat. We're at a two-point-six-million-dollar budget. It addresses some of our critical challenges that we have as a rural public health entity. The biggest lift we have this year is trying to find some infrastructure money for the new building. You guys have graciously provided us and trying to outfit that building with data cabling, data modernization. I think we've found that in some of the grant money that we have and some other opportunities for that, so we appreciate that. But overall, this budget, as you know, is about eighty-two percent roughly grant-funded. The rest is through our membership fees from all the four counties and the city of Fallon is where the funding comes from for the district. With that, might I answer any questions you may have or anything about the district?
Any questions or comments for Darren or Central Nevada Health District?
Concerning that data installation, is that, that's not part of the RFP we just released where it would be included in that construction? Jim, do you know?
For the record, Jim Barbie, no. So, this is out of their budget that they would be finding funds for to do the data lines and everything. We're not doing that as part of the remodel on the building or upgrades on the building, whatever we call it. And then the second comment I would make, and we may have talked, Darren, I can't remember. It's been so much stuff going on. And I know you guys have had more stuff going on, so thank you for your work and being the tip of the pointy spear for the bird flu and all those kind of great times that you're having. But we do have a furniture donation from the Nevada Department of Agriculture, and so I think that we're going to be able to completely outfit you guys once that building is open and ready to go with really nice quality furniture. If we can get it all put back together, it's like a jigsaw, but we're having them mark the sweets and do those kind of things, so I think that's going to have a significant funding offset for you as well. So, just FYI to file on the back of your mind. And then just for the commissioners as a reminder, so their budget approvals and authorities are set by the Central Nevada Health District, which has member representation from Fallon, Pershing County, Mineral County, Eureka County, and Churchill County. And basically, as a cooperative that is housing them underneath our governmental wings, I guess for lack of a better way of saying it, they are inclusive as part of our budget that is submitted to the state. And then we also provide them with council and HR, which then they pay back to the county for those services through the cooperative agreement that the county has with Central Nevada Health District, all a part of trying to build the new health district, the first rural health district, so that eventually we turn them loose and they fly off on their own. But just as a reminder how that relationship works. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, guys.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll jump to roads.
So, let's go over the fleet department first because that does affect General County. So, you know, we're about a year and a half into this, I think, and I didn't put this in there this fiscal year that we're in, but I put two hours a day for the fleet lead to supervise the fleet and the fleet department, and it come up to about twenty-four thousand, so I added that to the, basically, the parts budget. And then the utilities, the utilities for the electrical, has one electrical meter for both shops. I combined the square footage, and it's twenty-four percent of the bill, just electrical only. And then the fleet, which is twenty-nine-hundred dollars, and the fleet shop has its own gas meter, which is five thousand, that shop does. So, is there any questions about the fleet? Now, we'll go to the road department, which is not part of the general fund, which has nothing to do with that money. So, about a year and a half ago, I had a guy retire, and he, I kept him on the books this year because I didn't know if I could do what I needed to do without him, which obviously we did because I didn't hire anybody. So, I, Sherry didn't, I didn't have Sherry putting back on there for next fiscal year, so I added a hundred thousand dollars to the road projects, basically that buys the oils and the chips and asphalt and stuff. So, that's in the two-ten fund. Then I added twenty-five thousand to capital outlay, twelve-and-a-half thousand basically for an intercom system for both shops, which we used to have one, and we got the new phone system, and it doesn't tie to it. And then twelve-and-a-half thousand for the alarm system for the buildings, the three buildings. And then, so here's the big ones. So, six months ago or something, Jim, the past commission voted for the road department to buy a building from General County. So, then I did some research, went out and got some estimates basically to stand it. I told you during my tours, I was going to split it in thirds, office, bull room, and sign shop, and that estimate come back at nine-hundred thousand. So, but this is a placeholder. We'll get the estimates, get the bids, and then come back to the highway commission. You guys will vote on it, and we'll see where it lands. And then I upped the equipment replacement plan to thirty thousand. It actually has three line items. It has equipment replacement, tires, and extraordinary repairs. Our water truck, our ten-wheel water truck, the tank's rotting out on it, and it needs to be replaced, so I just added thirty thousand to the extraordinary repairs to that. So, the additional funding, so the road impact fund is which we gather when you, in the building permit process, we get twenty-seven-hundred dollars of the building permit, and I put there as a placeholder only, three-hundred thousand, then I come, I bring it in front of the highway commission, and when I want to spend something of it, it makes sense, then you guys vote on it. Just a placeholder. Regional transfer, the two-eighty fund, I budget six-hundred thousand, which that fund is, I have to do the work and they get repaid for the work, which that fund has about one-point-four-and-a-half million in it. The three-ninety-five fund is where I'm taking the nine-hundred from, the nine-hundred thousand for the building. It has about two-point-two million in there. The one-cent fund, eighty-five thousand, which that's restricted, I can only buy materials as far as back patch, asphalt, that I can't spend on anything else. And then the equipment replacement fund, which we budgeted a four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, thirty-thousand increase to fix that water truck, and that's all I got.
Any questions or comments from border staff? Okay, thanks for coming down, Gary. We'll jump to public works, planning, building water, and wastewater, Randy Hines.
Morning, everybody. So, I'll start with planning. Basically, we're not asking for anything in salaries and benefits, taking the recommendation from comptroller. You'd notice there's a significant decrease in that from me taking over for Chris, so that salary is decreased, but we're going to kind of offset it with the services and supplies. So, we moved to the Fresini building back in September, and with that, we have increased, or we have costs now that we didn't have when we were at the main building. So, that include the utilities, electrical, gas, CCCOM, so those are kind of added costs that we have for that. So, those, we just need to, we need to have those. And then the other thing that we have on there is a printer. So, we were using the all-in-one printer over there at the assessors. We don't have that anymore, so we have an additional five thousand for that printer there that we use monthly for all of our notices. So, and then the only other thing we're asking for is the, I guess, to keep the intern for a year that we already, that we had budgeted for this year. We're using our intern to, I guess that's up in the salaries, but we're using that intern to do scanning all of our hard copies that we have, boxes and boxes and boxes that we've compiled over the years. So, that's what she's currently doing now, and we'd like to continue to do that to get that on digital. Any questions on that? Okay, so go to the building. Again, same thing, since Marie's retirement, we actually have a decrease in salaries on that, but we have an offset with the, again, the services and supplies. It's kind of the same thing as the planning. We've got the utility costs. We have a contract for our big all-in, or our big plotter that I guess, I don't know if it was accounted for, but there's a four-thousand-dollar contract. We have a yearly contract. I'm getting Jared to look into that to see if we really need to do that. They, we don't, we don't get anything from it, and I don't see a monthly to do a maintenance. I don't, so Jared's doing some research, see if we can scrap that and just have it, have that printer as bought. I think it's already bought. We just have this service contract that we're looking into. So, that may or may not be in there. We just haven't heard back yet. So, the other thing, we've got some additional training we need to do, or required training. We have a new permit tech. We're just hired the new building inspector. We have a year to have that building inspector trained to be a certified residential inspector, and then six months after that, they have to have the commercial. So, that's part of the job description. They need those certifications, so we bumped up that training a little bit to accommodate for that. We try to offset that training with the pool pact grants. So, I think building has done a really good job of collecting those grants to offset those costs, but if we can't get those, then we have that money to cover that. And then the last thing is planning move to CitizenServe last year. Buildings on the last year of their gov pilot, and these are our online permitting programs. So, with this being one department, we're going to convert building over to Citizen Serve, so we're all on the same platform. So, the reason why we went to that was because we got off the AS400 and we're completely off of that now. So, we have to get both of those departments on the same program. It's an additional five thousand for us to do that, so. Any questions on that one? Okay. The water and wastewater, I'm just going to combine them. Everything we're keeping the same except for we do have some additional operator fees and additional fees from SPB. I think they went up like two dollars an hour on all our operators and administration stuff. And then there's, for the water, there's some additional testing that's required by the state that we have to take into account for. And then there's, for the sewer, there's some additional contracted services for like Marshall Septic to come dump all the waste that we pull out of the sewer treatment plant, so. And that's it.
Any questions or comments for Randy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll jump to Parks and Rec.
For the record, Jorge Guerrero, Community Activities Director. We're asking for two items, two capital items. Everything else staying the same. In 301, we're asking for five thousand dollars, more of a placeholder for replacing any vehicles that possibly may go down, and that would be replacing it through the state auction. That's why it's only five thousand dollars. You tend to get pretty good deals, those vehicles. And then in 160, Facilities and Grounds, we're asking for seventy-five-hundred dollars to do a replacement update of the lights in the fleet shop, and that's all we're asking for. So, if anybody has any questions?
Any questions or comments for Parks and Rec?
So, fleet shop and the road?
Road department, yes.
Okay, keep going.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, Jorge, do you still have cemetery and stuff too, or no? You got everything, you're done. Okay. Let's do comptroller. You're up, Sherry. Yep.
Thank you. For the comptroller's office, the only thing I'm asking for is an increase in the telephone to cover the, because now we're allocating all the costs to the various departments for the new phone system. So, that's the only thing I'm asking for there. And then I have a few other budgets. Let me scroll down here. Commissioners. Linda was going to talk on this item, but for the commissioners, there's additional expenditures for the TV and system, which wasn't budgeted, which has always been a little bit low, and I've had to augment. So, we're finally updating that this year so that the budget matches that for the commissioners. And general government- And General Government, you guys already talked on that. The OPID Fund, this is just a placeholder for items going through the OPID Fund, those are legal settlements that we are getting from our suit for the various pharmaceutical companies. And right now, the only funds that are being spent out of this is reimbursements to social services for some of their staffing. And the Debt Service Fund, that's just the exact amount of our cost of our debt, so that's what's there. Capital Projects, what we do here is we just put in a placeholder for $100,000, and anything that's going through there will come before you. Extraordinary Repairs, there's some placeholders here, a lot of times when there's unusual maintenances on buildings and stuff like that, those will go through, and if they're typically not something that needs to be approved by the Board, they'll be against this budget, or they, if it's a large, where it would need some sort of bid process or something like that, then it would come before you. Excuse me. The Scholarship Fund, this is where the, the tournament goes through for raising money to give scholarships to county employees and, and/or their kids, and this is a budget placeholder. Also, the General Fund is transferring $9,000 into this fund to help pay for scholarships. Building Reserve, pretty much placeholders there, there's, and everything that should go through this account will come before you to verify that, that's something that you want to spend out of that account. Yekabari, that's just a placeholder. We don't spend anything out of there, but it's in the General Fund, so when we need to augment, we can move that money. Contingency Fund, same thing. This is money that we put in there, we, we could up that this year if you want, this is something that can't be touched by bargaining agreements, so if we wanted to increase that budget, that, we may want to do that. The City Health and County Health, this is where we pay for the health inspections that Shannon had talked about, that we pay to Central Nevada Health District. That's that number. Then we have the Infrastructure Fund. Again, there's a, this is where we're gonna pay for our portion of the TDRs. They go through the Water Resources Fund, however, they don't have a revenue source to cover our portion, so this is, there's a placeholder for our portion of what the TDRs will cost, Sisah County, because it's usually like a 90-10, or 75-25 split when it comes to TDRs.
I think it's 75.
Is it now?
Yeah, 75-25. A few years back, it, there was some kind of emergency time period, I think during budget reductions, when they agreed to allow us to go 90-10, but I think two years ago, it returned to 75-25, yep.
Okay.
I, I do have a question on that. So we have $200,000 earmarked for purchase of TDRs, but in the Water Resource, we have 2 million for the purchase of TDRs. How, how do those work together?
Okay, how that works is, the Navy will only pay the 75%, so the 25 has to be paid some other way, so when we, I find out what the actual cost to the county is, then there's a journal entry to move some of those funds over to this account.
So the 2 million's a placeholder on the Water side?
Yeah, well, that's where the check will be cut out of.
Okay.
And then it'll all transfer funds to cover that, depending on how much comes through.
Okay.
Because the Navy will vary in terms of what their federal budget is in supporting conservation easements, so if, and it depends sometimes on the ranches that they're able to strike a deal with, and the volume of land that they're able to put in conservation, and the location of the land. Additionally, to note, just FYI, for the clarity of the Commissioners, the Navy is currently doing a review, and at some point should be bringing in for public presentation to us, a, of the, what's that map called? The noise map? Yeah, I can't, I can't think of it, but basically, it measures the decimals of the aircraft taking off, and they're, I believe, looking at expanding that in some directions based on a new aircraft that'll be operating and continuing to provide a buffer around the airbase for public safety.
Is, is that going to include impact from the FRTC, or are they gonna do that again down?
Unrelated, completely unrelated.
Two separate things, and we're pretty well maxed out on where the TDR program has gone through, correct, Jim?
Yes, they're, yes, they're approaching, basically, they've covered all the existing areas, but they have new aircraft that are supposed to be louder, and so I think that's probably as much as anything driving a potential look at reevaluating that map.
I'll just add one other thing to clarify the, the record, Joe Sanford for the record. I know we're using the term TDR as sort of a placeholder, but really, we're purchasing conservation easements, the TDRs themselves actually have no value.
Correct. Okay, any other questions on that, or moving on? I don't know why that's there. And then the Intergovernmental Services Budget, this is where we pay for China Springs and Winrich, that's the acronym. Those are the two juvenile probation facilities, and they come out of this fund, so that's just a placeholder. We just got the letter from Winrich from Lyon County, and that's going up about 20,000 between 24 and, I mean, 25 and 26. And these indigent donations, that's Shannon's account, I don't know where it's there. Forfeiture Funds, this is where we take in money and forfeitures when there's arrests and there's assets that are seized during the arrest due to drug-related incidents, they go into this fund or other various types of forfeitures of funds, and then they are paid out to the task force. And that's, this is basically an in-and-out account that we just run that money through, it's not our money. Indigent Hospital, that's just in-and-out, that's Shannon talked on that. The E911, these are fees that come in from the phone companies, and we use these to hopefully improve our, our 911 systems, and so that's a placeholder, and anything, we, we put through some of the fees that are through CCCOM into this fund, but other than that, any kind of large purchases would come before the Board. Risk Management, this is our insurance, we have a $50,000 deductible, so, anything below that typically goes through this account for payment, so this is if we have some sort of insurance claims. Compensated Absences, we, this is a fund in which we pay the payouts, we do the, we have a leave conversion policy in which employees can sell back their leave and, for annual or sick, and that hits this account, and if somebody retires, it hits this account so that you don't get a big huge fluctuation in budgets. However, what we do is we fund this account by taking 1.25% of payroll and putting it in this account every year. And Unemployment Benefits, that's our unemployment, that's a placeholder to, we have to pay for when we have claims where people leave, and we're responsible to pay their unemployment. And so we just pay the whole thing, it's pretty much self-funded there. Restitution Account, this is ins and outs, these are the restitution payments that are collected by the courts, or mandated by the courts, and we're collected, and then we pay them out to the recipients of the restitution. Administrative Assessment, this fund was actually started for the assessment fees, administrative assessment fees through Justice Court, and those have been going down. It used to be a lot higher, it used to have like 50,000, I've, just the way legislation has worked, it just keeps going down, these funds, so I keep reducing the budget so that we don't go over. So, we used to get like $50,000, and what we do is we reimburse this into our Building Reserve Fund to pay for the historic courthouse that was remodeled, for a few million dollars, until that's repaid. And Recreation Donations, that's really Jorge's account, he has it flooded. And the Golf Course, you want to talk about the Golf Course, Chris?
Sure, go ahead.
You, do you want to talk about the Golf Course? Or I can talk about this budget. This budget is actually just a placeholder for the Golf Course, because what we do is we get depreciation that hits our account, and we transfer $50,000 into this account to fund the capital improvements, and then the city also gives 25,000, and that's for operating. So these are just budget placeholders, but actually, what the Golf Course is gonna do, I believe someone else is gonna talk on that one.
No, nobody's gonna talk about that.
No one's gonna talk, okay.
Only because we met with Marty this year and sat down to see if there was any needs. He is fully aware of our budget situation this year, and he said he's gonna make do with the 50 from the county and the 25 from the city, and he's gonna be able to make that work. So, in discussions with him, he felt that because there's not an ask, that the, the standard contribution that the county and the city give is gonna be sufficient for him. We did do some renovations at the, at the Golf Course in terms of new bathrooms, those were received very well, but in terms of operation and maintenance, the 75 from the city and the county are, are sufficient for this year.
Thank you, and that's the end of all the budgets that I oversee, besides like overseeing everything, but.
Any questions or comments for Sheri? Okay.
Thank you.
Let's jump to Cooperative Extension. If you guys are ready, or we can go to another one, your decision.
My name is Kristen Burr, and I am the County Coordinator for Churchill County, and representing UNR Extension. We are requesting $169,910 for our FY26 budget. Is there more information, what would be helpful for me to give you, or do you have questions for me?
Just to kinda go over what you're requesting in your budget, and the, kinda the amounts associated with those requests?
Yeah, so we are requesting a budget for salary for employees, so that is for Karen Bogdanowicz, our 4-H CBI, a portion of Rebecca Glocknitzer's, our Youth 4-H Specialist, and then a portion of budget, or a part-time position for an admin assistant as well. And then we're asking for operating as well. So we're asking for 95,852 in salary, 39,212 in fringe, and then 26, 26,904 in operating through the county, and then 709, 7,942 in operating through UNR, so, that's for things like fingerprinting, some support, budget support for our 4-H livestock specialist, and then some computer equipment as well.
Okay, any questions or comments from Board or Staff on Extension? Okay, thank you guys for coming down early.
Thank you.
We'll move to Data Processing. Colin, you taking this one?
Colin's here to answer the questions that I can't answer. So, Chris Bros for the record. We have our, kind of our standard step increases for salary. Colin is the, the only employee in the Data Processing Department, and then the associated increases that, with the benefits that come with that. We have several changes, some significant, some not so much. Last year, we had $40,000 budgeted for contracted services, and what that was, that was the, the callouts that Logically did. To date, we hadn't spent any money on that. Talking to Colin, I know that we will, but we reduced that by $32,000 and left it at eight. Where we did see an increase was the IT Contracted Services, that's going up by $78,000, and what that is, is that is our, the service agreement that we have with Logically. It's based on the number of users that we have, and currently has an average cost of about 20, a little over 29,000, that's what it averaged over the last three months, and so that's what generated that, that, that increase. I anticipate that we're gonna stay at the same number, level of users next year that we are this year, so I just use that average. We have the, a small increase in the Landmark Software, that's the software that the recorder uses. They are in, they were in their last year of their contract. We didn't quite get the renewed agreement. I took a guess at a 5% increase, I believe I was a little bit light. That 5% increase was 500 and some odd dollars, so, or sorry, it was 645, so I'm assuming that might be doubled, so, we're a little light on that 13,515, it's probably closer to 14,000. The DevNet Software, that's used by the Assessor, they're in their fourth year of a five-year licensing contract, and that increase reflects the increase that is part of that year four. We have, we kinda have a, a new line item, we have gas and oil. The, the data processing now has a county vehicle, and so, gas and oil associated with the use of that. We have an increase in the telephone, and that's to cover the addition of one extra telephone on the Ring Central System. We have Ethernet Switch Fee, which is code 58470, that's for the monthly subscription fees associated with connecting all of the remote county offices to the main county network. Vehicle Repairs, again, this was added because we do have a vehicle with the department now, and so that's to cover any cost. These next two are, are the, the big ones. As everybody may or may not be aware, we are centralizing the purchase of our computers. All those computers are gonna be purchased through data processing, that's why on everybody else's budget, you saw line items in there at zero, or, or significantly reduced in case they needed something outside of computers, like printers or scanners, or something like that. So, we, in data processing, had a budget of 2,000, that's been increased by 92,000, for a total of 94. Colin has put together the list, we have a substantial number, 35, 37 computers that by October of this year will be obsolete because of Microsoft 10. There's not gonna be any support for that anymore, so they're gonna be paperweights, so, we have to go through the process to replace all those. Colin is also as part of that list. We are trying to get on a cycle for computer replacements, so we replace them every five years. We have a list being generated right now for any computers that are five years or older. If we have sufficient funding in this year, we're gonna try to replace as many as we can this year, but then this 94,000 is to cover any of the other computers that need to be replaced as part of being in that five-year cycle, aging them out. And then the idea is to maybe let one or two, or 10 go to six years, or maybe pick one up in four year, so that we're replacing technically 20% of the computers every year, so we don't have these, these peaks and valleys when it comes to the computer repurchasing budget. And then one other thing that we're doing, we're, we're centralizing a lot of our computer software costs. Colin's worked out, you know, deals through Adobe to buy our PDF readers, we get a better price if we buy more, so we have a substantial increase in computer software to cover the cost of the Adobe licenses for the various departments. This also covers Microsoft Office 365, which is what we've all converted to, so that pays for that, that cost to maintain that, those licenses. One thing we don't have, which is pretty integral to the Data Processing Department, is we don't have an account for computer hardware, so we've lumped our hardware into the software side of things. We've got firewalls that are gonna expire, we've gotta replace, we've got switches that we, there's seven that need to be replaced, but- We've got switches that we, there's seven that need to be replaced. But Colin and I talked and we can stage those out, kind of depending on budget, where we are. We have some wireless access points that we need to buy for some of the buildings that are remote, so they have access. And so we've kind of put that in together with the software because we don't have a hardware account, line item. So with that, Colin will be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for Colin on data processing?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a quick comment. As we move into some of the deliberation on decision-making later this afternoon, I would ask that you guys consider giving us as county leadership, direction on your feelings regarding us over the next fiscal year that we're talking about in twenty-six, doing an evaluation of help desk needs in the current existing contract we have with Logically. We've been in that for, what Sherri? Seven years?
Ever.
Eight years. And I know it was prior to me coming, maybe by a year or something like that. And so it's evolved over time. We're currently in a kind of year-to-year, month-to-month existing contract. And I think, you know, we've grown and we need to really consider if it's still effective in meeting our needs. In some ways, I know it absolutely is. But evaluating is there maybe better room and better expenditure of money where we pull back on some of the day-to-day computer help and actually research putting in an IT tech position that would basically be here five days a week, ready to jump over to the sheriff's office, jump over to the clerk's office, wherever we need help. Having the lead IT position really focus on the servers and the networking and that kind of infrastructure and then looking at reducing our outside contract to more of the security, high-level maintenance of the system and protections of the system. You know, that research may bear fruit that we get a recommendation that we go that way and recreate some savings. It may also bear fruit that that was crazy as the dickens and we don't want to change a thing. But I think we've been in this situation for some time now and it merits maybe a look back over our shoulders. So as we get closer to that deliberation time, there obviously wouldn't be any cost in basically researching or evaluating. But I think your opinion on where the county should go in that would be very helpful.
Go ahead.
Is the Logically contract, is it renewed? Like, are we ready to put out for renewal for that for this year?
For the record, Jim Marby. Check. I think we're basically month-to-month at this point with them. And so I think that's part of why it's timely. We're not sure if we want to enter into a long-term, you know, to make an edge, to put something forward to you that's a better reflection of making an educated decision. And although we're not marketing any money towards that or suggesting that in this next fiscal year, if staff could do the work to do the research, it may be middle of the year, we come up with an idea that, you know, we think we need to pursue at a minimum, going out for an RFP and seeing if we can get the same things done for a better rate. I think it's just a spot that needs to be evaluated that with everything else that's been going on over the last several years, we haven't had the time to do that. And you guys articulate, articulating that as a directive would make that a priority and I think be helpful. Or maybe you don't think, but just something to consider.
If we're month-to-month, I mean, I would like to see us getting RFP started to find those services and eliminate the services, the day-to-day services, and then maybe put that in there as an add to their RFP, you know, give us an additional cost so we can see the differences, all the differences, right? Because it is probably time. We're large enough now that we can't have people waiting two or three days because now we already have staff shortages. So then when you put in, you can't work because you don't have your computer, then what's that help, you know? So that's what I would be interested in is, you know, yeah, we can approve a certain amount of money for the budget, but let's get into a, you know, offer out of contract. Do you got, how do you guys?
Absolutely.
I agree.
It looks like we've been over budget for the last couple of budget cycles. And I think we need to take a serious look at.
I agree with you a hundred percent. We're in a situation right now where we've got a budget and we're only going to change horses if we recognize some sort of a savings or increase the value that we're getting out of an RFP or a person. So by looking at this budget and saying, okay, this is what we'll approve, we'd come to you with some sort of savings, whether it's financially or intangible savings when it comes to lost production or something like that. So you guys have something to look at.
Any other questions or comments on data processing or that plan that we have in place now? Okay. Thank you, Colin.
You're welcome.
We'll go ahead and jump to our lunch. It'll be a one-hour lunch, so we'll reconvene, let's say at one o'clock.
Okay, we'll go ahead and resume this meeting. We'll move to review and discussion of presented budgets.
Mr. Chair, if I could have a moment, I'd like to address a matter. Before the board considers any of the prior presentations, I want to address an issue presented by the sheriff regarding potential liability in the detention center. I believe that any characterization that the sheriff's office is currently unable to meet their state or federal standards for bed checks was only a hypothetical situation, but, and is not actively occurring, but the district attorney's office will conduct a thorough evaluation of that issue as well as any potential liability, and I will report back to you at a litigation meeting prior to April 15th.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, for counsel, then reflective to the budgets in front of us, what can I suggest that on the sheriff's portion of the budget that we neither approve or disprove that budget and basically set it aside until commission's able to confer with you so that they can make the best decision to ensure that we are covered in terms of our needs?
Yes, I would recommend that you not take any action on that budget at this time because we're going to have these concerns that will be outlined. You can put it in as a filler with either their current budget or a proposed budget, but that the final decision wouldn't be made until the April 15th time period.
Okay, thank you both. Jim, could you kind of go over how we tackle this most of the time?
So, we need you to go back to the top of the presentation that started yesterday, and we'll go through each one of those, just kidding, just kidding. So, you've got multi-colored package sheet in front of you that was provided by Sherri. Normally, what we'll do is we start with the blue sheet, which is the personnel, and we go through each one of these requests. And so, these requests that you're seeing on these pages are basically augmentations or enhancements to the base budget which was provided. Noteworthy at the beginning of this budget process, based on my assumptions and Sherri's assumptions in building the budget for it to be prepared for you, we included in the budget, so that's not a decision point unless you wanted to make it a decision point, but we didn't believe you did, that the per set off of 3.25 or 1.6, basically the employees' half of that per's increase, both the law enforcement version for probation and parole, non-union groups, and because those are negotiated, those that are unioned, those will be negotiated as part of their negotiations, and then non-police-fire employees that are non-union, we include it in the budget. So, that means that the budget as it's presented, not when you get to the end and decide if you want to do additional COLA or not, we're basically building in that the county, which is a type of COLA, is offsetting those costs because the county is not required to offset those costs to the employee. So, that represents in building the budget that we have basically built in roughly 1.1 million to cover those costs of the staff that's not required by law, but we assumed that you wanted us to start the budget building process from that position. So, as the numbers that you look at in terms of the revenue projections that we have and the expenditure projections that were provided by Sherri and her staff, that is included. So, as we look through the blue pages, and then we go to the yellow pages, and then the light golden rod, or whatever the heck it is, and then pink at the end, we'll go through each one of these pages and make decision points and ask for your direction, whether to approve those, to go in the budget draft, which is, what's the word I'm missing?
Tentative.
Tentative budget that we have to submit by early March to the state, and then we will come back prior to May to affirm the final budget and make any other adjustments necessary, in which case that would give us the ability to reflect back on the sheriff's presentation at that point. So, right now, we'll walk through this excluding the sheriff's components. You'll make decisions. Sherri and Jamie will then identify those changes, and then that gives them direction to go ahead and put the tentative budget, which will come back before you as an overall correct, before we send it to taxation in Carson City. And then, do we have any questions for me on that? You good?
Nope, I think we're good. Anyone have any questions? If not, we'll go ahead and start on this blue sheet. If anyone has any thoughts or opinions on any of these, or want to address any of these?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would jump in on the requested reclassifications excluding the district attorney's reclass. The district attorney's reclassification reflects the decision that you made earlier this month, or I believe this month, maybe January, relative to the public defenders in terms of being able to go out and kind of have the flexibility between the two and the one when recruiting those positions as we move forward. We would ask, staff would recommend that you go ahead and approve that one relative to the recorder district, or sorry, recorder, clerk, treasurer, and is there one in justice court? No, just those two then, right? We would ask that you make a recommendation to HR to engage with those elected officials and actually go through the process of doing a desk audit, and then bring those back for a recommendation or not recommendation in your final decision outside of the budget process. So, basically, they would not be approved in the budget process. Chris's staff would then engage with them to do a desk audit and determine if they're working out of class, not working out of class, and then whatever reorganizational structure that you guys would prefer that they do, we do that through basically a meeting process.
Do any of you have any objection to that? Okay, so that takes care of that. Anything else anyone on this sheet wants to address?
Oh, I would, I would also recommend that we hold off on making a decision on the justice court hours until, as directed yesterday, we look at the example of Douglas County and Carson City, and there may be others, and I meet with the district court judge and the justice court judge and see if we want to make a change in the proposal where maybe we look at forming a new department of clerks. And so, that will be a timeline I'll be under as well that would reflect that April 15th date, that I would need to get that recommendation and those comparables put together. Does that work for you, Sherri? We set it aside until then?
Yeah, it can exactly be April 15th because that's when I have to have.
Well, but prior, yeah.
Yeah, we would need it before tentative.
I would target, I would target like a month.
Yeah.
When is the tentative budget presentation, by the way?
Uh, let's see.
We have those reclassifications done in that timeframe as well?
Yeah.
You think, you think so, yeah, you can get those, so the reclassifications in a month as well?
Yeah.
Okay, or the evaluation of them, I guess.
Yeah.
We will be coming back to you guys on March 27th. That will be the rollout of the tentative budget. However, the departments will be getting their tentative budgets on March 13th and 14th. And then, they're supposed to meet with you if they have any questions, county manager. So...
Man, you're going to make life challenging. So, what's your drop dead date that we would need to get back? I think both of us need to understand that.
For which part?
For us basically to have recommendations in those two different topics for the commission, and if so, those budget changes that would be suggested as well.
I'd say March 15th.
Holy day. Okay.
That sounds okay to me. It gives you ten days.
It's Saturday.
So, March 14th.
And so, when we distribute the tentative budgets to the departments, do we want to take these out or put them back or use?
I would take them out, yeah.
Okay, so then I just need to go through this list and verify which one of these you want taken out.
And then, yeah, so we're talking basically anything reflective of the sheriff's office, and then on the blue sheet, just the augmented hours for the justice court.
Okay, so the public defender stays in, clerk treasurer goes out? Can we just go down the list?
Yes, let's do that. I agree, that's fine.
So, public defender stays in, clerk and treasurer out, commissioner, that obviously stays in, district attorney stays in, district court stays in, recorder out, justice court would be an out, correct? Parks and Rec 303 in, public works and planning in, sheriff's office obviously out, and then social services in.
Beautiful, that's lovely, thank you.
Just to follow up after that, all that confusion, when does the desk audits need to be done?
So, you would want the desk audits done by March 14th?
By the 13th and 14th.
13th, 14th in there, yeah.
Okay, so that takes care of the blue sheet, correct? Everyone agree on that one?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to the first orange sheet. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull out of this? I will say cooperative extension, we just did that two mil tax increase last year. I know it's only $11,000, $12,000, but that's the difference that they're requesting versus the increase that we did last year.
Sorry, for the record, Jim Barbie, on the cooperative extension piece, this is what they are guestimating the increase to two mil would reflect in terms of revenue, which they're matching their expenditure to. We basically have had conversations with them, and we think it's hopeful, but we told them that, you know, we can stand with that, but we're going to be watching quarterly to ensure that this is going to fall in compliance, and if not, the University of Adirino is going to have to come up with other funding to bridge the gap.
That addresses my concern.
No, and I'm glad you said that so that we got that on the record.
Does anyone else have anything on this sheet?
And we, and we have that exchange in writing as well, by the way.
Perfect. Okay, we'll go to the next sheet.
Are we approving everything or approving everything?
Approving everything on that sheet. On the next sheet.
He's got his sheriff stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, but he's not on this one here. So, now we're on the sheet that has the data processing at the top of it. Is there anything on this one someone would like to address?
Okay, well, so the county manager and data processing will have vehicles, they present the budget, are these those there, or they go to fleet maintenance?
Those should go to fleet maintenance.
Okay, I'm going to hear those out.
Yep.
What did we give them first, data process?
Not, not the fuel components, but the repair components. Correct. Good catch, Jamie.
I got a question.
I believe that the number of computers that are going to be out of date, I don't believe it to be 47, right? It was 30?
So, one was, I think, 32 in this fiscal year, in which we have existing funding, or whatever that number was, I don't want to guarantee that number. We have a said number of computers that we currently have budget to replace, which basically created the proposed amount for FY '26 that would bring us into that five-year compliance. So, the numbers that are vested in this.
Okay.
Are for the next years.
So, it's adding.
Which, right, so the first ones we're taking in this fiscal year are going to be the ones that are non-operable because of the operating system. I believe we get most of that taken care in this fiscal year, but not all, and then the next fiscal year, we finish up that issue, and then we bring the remainder into the five-year compliance of the policy that we're trying to achieve.
Okay.
So, there will be, and then I think, speaking of this topic, long-term, I think we're going to have to have call, and then, once we get into our five-year compliance, start trying to divide things up where we, where we maybe replace a few more that are in the four-year category, where the idea is every year, we're doing one-fifth, so we have a balanced expenditure ongoing, and it's not 60% of the computers one year, 20% the next year, 10% the following year, and so we don't have this ebb and flow up and down. We want to achieve the five years, but we also want to achieve ongoing budget consistency in terms of volume or replacement, which means we'll have to, once we get to five, then we'll start tweaking and bring, and address that as we bring you budget requests, which is why we're consolidating it all under an IT so that it is manageable versus each office having their own computer expenditure authority.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, on those 32 computers you're saying that the program's going to run out on, they will not function after that program runs out?
Right, because it's the operating system going from operating system 10 to 11, right?
So, we're sort of like, we have to replace those.
Yeah, you will not have any more support from Microsoft Windows 10.
And we, we have no, we don't have computers sitting in a room somewhere, right, to?
No.
We don't have a, okay.
No.
Okay, so we're still on this data processing page. Does anyone have anything? Data processing, district court, district attorney, district court security, E911, elections, fire department, fleet maintenance, general government. Does anyone have anything on this?
I did have a question, and maybe for Sherri. Under the district court, where they were talking about the impacts because of where we have, we have some variables there on that court security component and where it's budgeted. I know that we carry the county manager's part of it for, I believe, the, is it the sheriff's, is it the jail? And then, there's the part that's a district court, and then there's another part that's tied to justice court, and it's the same outfit. Would that be better handled in a consolidated? And this is just for conversation as you guys leading the comptroller's office.
I believe they bill us per where they're working, so we code them too.
They do, but like, for example, the county manager's office has no security, but yet we have part of that in our budget that we deal with.
I was under the impression you guys made the contracts, those are still coded to department, to district court and justice court.
They're still to the district court and to their own deal.
Yeah, they're not coded out of your department.
So, that's part of the confusion I've had because we're constantly dealing with when they request a increase in salary and all those kind of pieces, yet it's outside of our budget. That's the issue, okay.
Yeah, I was under the impression.
Is there a better way that that should be working, or are we good with that?
I don't know if you want the departments to handle the contracts, but...
Well, if they're serving the departments, it'd probably be better.
I mean, that's the only other place where we're handling another department's contract. I think it seems, but that's where I'm looking to Sherri.
Yeah, no, I think there was a reason for that in the beginning, whether there was like disagreements as to whether they wanted it outsourced or whether they wanted it in-source, so it was taken over at that time by the county manager's office, and they did the contract, and then it was billed to the department.
But that money, that contract money exists within those budgets.
Yeah, yeah, it's not in your budget.
So, isn't that something they should, I'm looking to Joe now, isn't that something they should be doing under consultation with you?
Typically, they do it that way. I believe potentially this one came up because it was a multi-department agreement, and I think the thought was that because it was being negotiated across multiple departments, it ended up in your, your lap, specifically, especially with justice court, where it's the court services and the justice court, you know, how that ended up being split out, and so that's why I believe it came under your department. But I have no objection to having it under a different one legally. Typically, people would come to me and...
You're going to review them either way, right?
Yeah.
Can I just add real quick? Alexa Robinson for the record. On that one, I think it's because of, this is the security guards at the...
Yes.
So, they charge us because they're like out of state or out of local, they charge us for four-hour blocks. So, if we have time left, like we don't need them for the four-hour blocks, we have to pay for that. So, I think that's why it came to us, because there was some negotiations about, well, if we're paying for four hours anyway, maybe we can have them jump over to the library or to some other department. So, it was a lot of departments outside of even just the court, just to get the full utilization out of...
Which, when we, when we requested them to help us with the library, they told us no.
So, I guess that didn't, but that might have been why it ended up in our laps, because there was more than just the courts being put around.
And this doesn't have to happen in this situation. We can talk offline, but I think maybe we would, it would be, make more sense to tie those to the leadership of that department that are, that are doing those components moving forward, and we can work on that on the off, that doesn't need to be approval here. Sorry, I took us down a rabbit hole.
That's fine. Okay, so other than that, and we will talk after the fact on that, anything else on this sheet? Okay, we'll move to the next one.
Go ahead. On the general government insurance liability, you know, we have it marked at $100,000 for just normal cost. Can someone speak to the liability insurance? Does that go out to bid every year to allow anyone who can offer the service to make sure we're always getting the best policy and cost?
No, we haven't gone out to bid for a really long time. We use pool pack, and that's what we've always used, so we have not gone out to bid. However, we have like increased buildings and stuff, so that's, and increased employees, so there, that is why the price keeps going up, but...
Do we know if pool pack, do they try to solicit multiple brokers or...
So, we negotiate with them sort of every year, but it's all under the pool packed umbrella.
Conglomerate.
And so, I think... and so I think EH Hirsch is our like local entity here, broker, but PoolPact is the general government liability insurance pool all across most government agencies in Nevada, not everyone, some people leave voluntarily, some people, I guess, kind of get kicked out, but they are extremely beneficial to us in that capacity as a, you know, essentially we are a self-insured entity, and so we have extremely high deductibles, but it prevents us from having a large increases up and down with our insurance claims, and so I think we could address that a little bit, I don't know exactly how they do with the local brokers each year, but that's how that process works.
Thank you. Anything else on here? And just for clarity, it's just going to be that vehicle repair on data processing's been removed. Moving to the next one, this is the sheet with general government at the top of the paper, does anyone have anything on here they'd like to bring out? Last chance, hearing none, we'll move to the next page, oh, one more second. Okay, we'll jump to the next page, we'll go to, this one is the museum, has that one line item at the top, is there anything on here someone would like to bring up?
I'll just talk about the, just because it's a line item there, the telephone, there's other people that's mentioned, they have unexpected costs from Ring Central, can someone help me understand why they're commenting that they seem to be surprised by that or something?
Well, what happened was, we used to have it in just one lump sum, but we went and it's allocated out to the various departments now, and so their, the expenses associated with their department as opposed to general government because of how many lines they had, but it should be cheaper overall than it was when we used to pay CCCom, is my understanding.
Correct.
Has anyone like confirmed that or done that math, or does it matter?
Yeah, no, they're ongoing, because it's basically all run through our internet connection, and then we're basically doing a per-phone cost, and so those costs, minus the initial infrastructure changeover, are cheaper, I mean, we can have that pulled out for you, but.
So I can't give you concrete examples for anyone else, but the district attorney's office used to pay its own phone bill, and so moving to Ring Central, our expected cost is five thousand dollars reduced.
Okay.
That's just, but we paid our own, and so that's why.
Right, you can track it.
Thank you for that, no further action for that either.
Okay, if everyone's good with that page, we'll bump to the next page, which is the sheriff's department, which we know we will not be addressing right now, but there is social services at the bottom of this page, anything in social services someone would like to pull?
I have a question, Chris Ross for the record, looking at these costs, you have one called CART grant, I'm assuming those are expenses as they are associated with the grant for CART, is that correct?
So that's a state federal funding that comes through the county and then is transitioned to CART, which is a private nonprofit that runs the program.
So is the revenue of that grant recognized on our revenue side? Okay, thank you.
We do pay a portion, though, it's not a hundred percent funded.
Fair enough, it's just when you see, you know, one point three million dollars and it has a lot of grant verbiage behind it.
And probably more discussion coming in the future on that topic, Matt's itching to hit the button over here, so.
Oh, okay.
There'll be more to come on CART in the future.
Most of the social services is grant-funded, correct?
Correct, they're out of there.
Do we, do we hold the grant money that we receive, do we show its own line item to where we show all the grants comes into one account and it goes back out, it's not convoluted with the general fund or anything like that?
Well, actually, no, it's, social service has its own fund, and it is, gets revenue from tax, taxes, property taxes, we also put some revenue in there from geothermal, geothermal and sales tax, and then each grant will have its own line item for revenue, however, a lot of the grants cover payroll, so payroll would not have its own line, and grants will cover like gas and oil or a lot of these various expenses, so the expense size doesn't exactly match to the revenue side because of the way it's coded, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
No, it's a tax rate aside, unless you change.
Any other questions on this page? Okay, we'll move on to another page with social services at the top, anything on here someone would like to pull? Underneath that technology, computers and printers, four thousand, laptop for commissioners, secretary and iPads for appraisal software, would that fall underneath data processing or no?
It's its own fund and it gets money from not the county, so they wanted to pay for their own computers and stuff.
Yep, that's fine, if they get it from elsewhere, perfect. Any other concerns or questions on that page? Okay, we'll jump to the yellow sheet, E nine-one-one is at the top of this sheet, any discussion on any of these items on this page?
And will we be pulling out the sheriff's out for this for now?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
They have a placeholder in there for the mechanic shop for the fire department, are we still keeping that in there, or do we need to pull that out since we're?
I think that's a question, right, so we had tried to basically set aside funds so there wasn't some big bite that the county was, so it's basically created kind of a savings, is what we've tried to do, but, you know, we're, we're looking for places that we can be as efficient and as effective as possible, we did get the property bought this year, I think this was this year, this fiscal year, that's next to the fire department where this would potentially be built out in the future, you know, maybe we need to skip a year to free up a little more revenue for some of the decisions that you're going to have once you work through these, that's just an option that you would have.
I'd agree with that as well, is to pull it this year just because we had to buy that Wong property, and then next year we can resume that, last year, I believe we cut it, last year as well just because of the cuts, but this year we had to buy that Wong property, so if everyone's okay with removing that line item?
And then that other fire department, that hundred thousand, that was for a new duty rig, correct?
No, that's just a placeholder for that, that's in the equipment fund, it's just a line item, they probably won't use it, but we always put like a dollar there.
Something, okay. Then down at the bottom, the water resources, the purchase TDRs is at two million there, somebody help, can someone help me understand that?
So that was the previous conversation that we had had, where basically the conservation easements that are purchased through the Navy, so if we have a certain amount, let's say the Navy, and it's kind of a holding piece as well, because that could change, so say the Navy comes back and says, hey, we got three million dollars allocated this year that we can expend on conservation easements, then we would add basically the twenty-five percent multiplier on top of that, and that's what the county would be responsible, if all of those projects were approved through the sending site committee, then went through the appraisal process by the agriculture appraisers, and then the family or farm owners were met with, and they agreed to the conservation easement purchase, then the Navy would fund it through this line item, and we would basically, do we, I think we cut the final check because it comes through us, right, and then go through the closing process, and then that would create the TDRs that come out of that equation or out of that calculation, so this just basically represents a holding spot for the federal money that's coming in, minus basically the quarter percentage of that purchase that the county has agreed to partner with the Navy on.
Thank you.
And then if you just, if you had questions about the specific amount, I actually, I spoke with the Navy and they said they roughly estimate doing the same amount of purchases that they did this year, so it's a very similar amount, so just kind of kept it the same, just, if you had a question about the specific, why it's that high?
I have more of a question, so what does the county benefit by paying twenty-five percent, what do we get? So the county specifically benefits in the vision when this was created, and it's significant, is that that water is permanently tied to that ground and to that property, so each time the water runs up and down those ditches with the TCID component, then we're basically charging our aquifer, which prior to the Newlands project, we were estimated, I believe, to have a groundwater twelve-hundred-and-fifty acre feet in this desert location, where with the Newlands project and with the irrigation that we keep in the community, and with the seep that we get into the groundwater reserve, we're at roughly twenty thousand acre feet, somewhere in there, in terms of a resource, so this was done, not only the obvious benefits of conservation relative to wildlife and beautification of the community and all that, but even more significantly to creating and sharing the long-term water supply for our community, even as we get growth and development in the community in the years moving forward.
And furthermore, to add on top of what Jim just said, the state classifies our basin as not only over-allocated, but also over-pumped, and they're working on redoing those numbers because they think those numbers are a little bit out of line, but regardless, the majority, I think it's three-fourths of basins in Nevada are over-allocated and over-pumped, so by doing the TDR program, conservation program, you know, it kind of solidifies that we're going to have water at this location for future years.
Thank you, makes sense. Public transportation is going to clarify that that money comes out of road funds and has not, it doesn't have anything to do with the general fund or.
Correct, those are set-aside funds, just like the social services set-aside tax.
Thank you.
And that line item would go in front of RTC first, too, correct, and then would come to us?
Yeah, those are just the transfers that they ask for, their quarterly transfers to pay for the roads, and that gets moved to the road department from that fund.
Okay, thank you. That's what I'm talking about as well, that'll come out of three ninety-five, Gary, it'll come out of three ninety-five, which is inside RTC, so it'll go to them and then come to us.
Yeah, for the building?
Yep.
And again, on the, just for clarification on the building, as that project, if and when that project moves forward, that will then come back to you again for an additional approval to go out to bid and all that kind of good stuff. Highway commission, thank you.
Well, yeah, highway commission. Any other questions on this yellow sheet? If not, we'll move to this community support sheet, is there anything on here anyone wants to address?
I'm sorry, which sheet are we on? Community support, okay, sorry.
We had the discussion yesterday that we're funding those fully now, and then we just took that difference out of the miscellaneous line item, okay?
We rearranged.
Rearranged, yeah, same amount, just rearrange how it gets structured.
And then we, previous administration gave caps in an exorbitant amount of money than normal.
Correct.
Are we still okay doing the seventeen thousand, or does that play a part into what we're given now?
So our thought process, and again, this is up to you guys, this would be your decision point, they got seventeen thousand in this fiscal year as part of the set-aside community fund, and then roughly another hundred and fifty thousand on top of that, so they were looking at a hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue that they've received for capital improvement projects on their facilities, there, thus the idea was we would leave them at the seventeen thousand this year moving forward, and then in twenty-seven, we could look at restoring them to twenty, that was the thought process, you guys tell us what you want to do.
This is Chris, for the record, and the hundred and fifty that were paid were specific for improvements that needed to be done for caps, whereas the seventeen or subsequently the twenty was part of operation and maintenance, which obviously they're still going to have to undergo and.
Any, go ahead, Randy.
Yeah, because I think they actually directed that towards capital improvement, too, didn't they, the seventeen?
Randy, for the record, it wasn't actually, it wasn't one hundred and fifty thousand, it was a hundred and six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand, okay, sorry about that.
So they've gotten about a hundred and twenty, they got about a one-twenty-three or one-twenty-two for the year, so.
Thank you, clarity. But I think they did use their seventeen thousand as well towards capital improvement on issues, that's what I'd thought.
Okay, if there's nothing on there, we'll move to the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight projections, which I don't know.
And that's just informational.
Yeah, that's just informational, we really don't need to address any of that. Okay, so we went through our wish list there, and I will move on to what would we like to address next, we could go to.
Yeah, I can.
If you want to take that, Jim, yeah.
Yeah, let me start with that introduction, and then Sherry can speak to what I think is the final piece, the COLA, I'll push in front, something that I'm specifically bringing forward relative to basically a couple of issues that I foresee for the county moving forward, elected officials haven't had raises in ten, fifteen years, something like that, that's dependent on action taken by the state legislature, in the time that I've been here, and I can even remember the times when I was at the state, and that would be brought up every session as a conversation piece, and no movement has thus happened on that, and I think when we've had some of the payroll conversations along the way today, we've reflected that, you know, the idea that it shouldn't be appropriate that a supervisor is making less than an employee that reports to them, generally speaking, recognizing that in the realm of elected officials, that's pretty much every elected official that we have, and so there's things that are in our control and things that are not in our control, and that is one of those things that is not in our control, but one of the things that I think is in our control and that I would like to bring forward for consideration for the elected officials, and then also for appointed and department heads, those that are at the end of the pokey stick, that we want to recruit the best staff that we can to step up into the leadership roles, and I say at the end of the pokey stick, meaning that, you know, they serve at the will of the commission, or they serve at the will of the county manager, or whoever that entity is, they are unclassified and they are the lead for that entity, we have surely more folks that are unclassified, but those that are in that leadership role for that department. Moving forward to help us recruit, I brought the concept and did the research to evaluate where Churchill County falls relative to surrounding counties, and so I provided you with a sheet there that reflects numerous other counties around us and other governmental entities, including TCID and the city of Fallon, and the benefits that they offer to their elected appointment department heads, and this speaks directly to recruit, recruiting people and having folks willing to step up into leadership roles, and having folks willing to step up within their community and run for elected office. You know, it would seem awkward that someone in my position would bring this forward because clearly it would appear that I would benefit from this, but today happens to be the day that I met my thirtieth year commitment in the retirement system for Nevada, and as such, I have already communicated to the commissioners that I intend to retire in July, and so, you know, there's things that we'll be talking about in upcoming meetings relative to a future search and those kind of things. to a future search and those kind of things, but I don't want to take away from, but I want to reinforce that I will not benefit from this. And I'm bringing this forward because I think it's an important issue to address where we can for elected officials and for recruitment of leadership positions within the county. So if you look at the sheet, I've broken it down into basically four options. And again, in the sheet, I won't go over, you can see that, it varies from the employee getting 100% to the employee getting some percentage for their dependents and to 100% for their family. Directly related within this community, TCID and Fallon are both employee and family 100%. And I only, you know, specifically target those because those are obviously specific competitors with the county in terms of employment. So the options that I've broken out is A, good information, thanks for the heads up, Jim, we're not interested. Option two, the ability to approve it reflective of providing the benefit that the employee requires, requests or needs. And, you know, I took a best guess based on the employees themselves that are in these positions and, and the page, I'm sorry, and the page attached to it behind it specifically identifies those positions. And if you took action to do this in '26, I would have to work with Joe to come up with Title III language that would identify these as separate entities to be able to, to, to give this benefit, to provide this benefit. But if we did it for just, you know, as it would stand, you know, for the employees, like for me currently, I only insure myself because my wife has her own insurance and our kids are on their state insurance, so I would have some deemed cost if I were to stay with the county, which I'm not. But laying that across everything, I would guesstimate that that would have an additional cost to the county of around $140,000. Now, some of these options, they've included here where they basically provide a stipend, which would be represented by option three, and then the individual employee could determine, well, it's just me, so I'm only employee benefit component. So whatever that difference is for that total family stipend, I want to have that transferred into a, what do we call those? Deferred Comp, thank you, account, kind of like what we approved with the commissioners in this last meeting relative to their purrs that they're not claiming. And then the fourth one could be a discussion of, you know, well, we like the idea, Jim, we're already a employee 100%, but we want to feel like at this point we would only cover 50% of whatever their family cost is, which would reduce number one to some amount. Or it could be only 50 or 75% of the full family cost, which would reduce the cost of number three that could go in and be paid as a stipend or as a, into deferred comp or, or so then just kind of an, an equal playing field so that you're not held financially at a different level because you don't have a family or because you, your kids are grown or whatever your personal situation may be. But I think it's important to, to look at that for consideration as you then look to the numbers that Sherry has provided, which would speak to a 1%, a 2% and a 3% COLA for all staff across the board. As we look at, at revenue, Sherry ran the revenue numbers and jumped in, Sherry, and correct me if I screw up anywhere along the way. Running the revenue numbers at 4%, recognizing that we have holding spots as we've gone through for, you know, building projects that may not be expended on, that are one, one-shot expenditures, to the example being where we have open positions where we're hopeful that they will be filled, but if the last year would be a representative of our ability to fill those positions, the probability is that they won't. Representing that we would continue to move forward with our existing gapping procedures that thus far where we are at this point in the year, which is a little bit over half, we're north of a million dollars in savings that we've created simply from the gap, gapping piece, which is a tremendous tool. Leaning forward in that the conversations I've had with Mark at CCCom is that they feel confident that they can restore the $150,000 dividend.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty. What did I say? Whatever I said, I'm, you tell him thinking ahead or the, whatever the next.
That's not the same conversation.
Yeah, no, eight fifty, thank you, Mark. Matt, good lord. So, yeah, 150 a month, yeah, let's go with that. 850,000 in dividend back to, to the county a year earlier than, than what was agreed I, I think you have a menu of things that can be accomplished in front of you. And with that, I would ask, you know, Sherry, if I missed anything in that or if you would put a different spin or flavor or what your thoughts are, feel free to, to, to express those. So this is where it gets complicated.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine. I mean, we do have a shortfall, however, we do typically budget expenditures higher because that's how it works in the budget so that we don't go over budget and have budget violations which are against the law. However, you know, we still have quite a gap and we just pretty much approved a lot, but we're taking a lot off, but that might go back in depending on how things go. So those are things to think about. I mean, our actual revenues for '24 were 57.4 million, but that had a lot of, it's not very comparable because of all the COVID money that was flowing, so the revenue might be higher.
The only other thing I forgot is that, as you're aware, we have some large projects in the county, the Nevada Energy Project, which based after abatement, moving forward, not in this year, but moving forward over the next three years, which is their, their building timeline and they are building aggressively and moving aggressively as opposed to some of the projects we're used to here. That should generate around $2 million additional in property taxes, what they're projecting that at for the next 20 years. So there's some other revenue sources that are, that I feel confident are coming and we have other projects beyond that that have already come in front of the planning commission or are coming in the planning commission the next week.
Thank you for that, Jim. If my other two commissioners are okay with it, I'd first like to address the COLA and then we can go to the governmental insurance packages. So I personally was thinking, it was unfortunate last year that no one got a COLA, so I personally, ideally it'd be, you know, three, but I think reasonably, let's not just jump back into three and I don't want to say three and then we come back after we get the tentative budget and a three is not feasible. What is everyone's thoughts on a 2% COLA increase this year?
My thought is I want to give them everything we can give them, like the rest of the commission, I believe, has that same feeling. If we can get to a three, I would like to get to a three. If that means we do something a little different on this package for the electeds, I, I think that's, you know, you're only, an organization is only as good as its people and these people didn't get anything last year and it starts to wear on people. Maybe they don't feel appreciated, they're struggling to pay for things, all the things that we, we all face, right? Things are getting, they're not getting, they're super expensive. I feel, I, I wish we could give them 10%, but that's just not feasible. If we can, if we can shoot for two now and if we can get to three.
No, I like that idea, that's exactly, basically we said the same exact thing, is that I love a three, but I just don't want to say three and then?
I mean, we need to continue to work to get to three is my feeling. I'm comfortable with two right now, but I think we need to do everything we can to get to three.
Does that work for you, Eric?
I agree with both the other commissioners. I'd like to bring, I consider everyone, even if you're elected, you're still an employee of the county and I just want to bring everybody together and sort of get everyone in line, right? So I'd like to start with the 2%, knowing that hopefully that we can do something for the next topic. And then when we get this all hashed out, if it looks good and there's room, then we can come back and talk about it to get to that 3%.
Sounds good to me, so it sounds like a consensus is we'll start off with this two with the hope that we can get to that 3% depending on how those numbers come back.
Okay, we can do that. I, I do like the idea where you're looking at the other items to cut because if you cut some of those items, it's easier to get to the COLA.
Yeah. Okay, so now we'll jump over to the governmental insurance packages, everyone's thoughts on this.
I just want to make a clarification real quick on option two. That's already in place, correct? Each one of those people get health insurance?
That is not in place, no.
So this is me guesstimating, so they already get the employees' percentage, but kind of understanding the individuals that serve in these positions, if they're utilizing full family or if they're utilizing spouse or if they're utilizing children add-ons, that would be the cost of, of what they're basically currently utilizing above and beyond. So that 140,000 is roughly an estimation of what is currently coming out of this list of folks behind on the second page, out of their pocket, above and beyond what the county covers for their 100% employee insurance, which is what the county currently covers.
Okay, so option two covers their family, the people that would be on it right now.
That, as best as I can tell that are currently, yes.
I understand.
Yep.
But the ones that aren't having anything drawn at will want to take part in this, so that number's going to go up.
I would, I would concur with that.
Unless we do option three, then it's just straight across the board, every person gets that much money and they do what they want to with it, correct?
Well, yes, and I, and I think, can you clarify between Joe and Sherry? If it's done in the manner of a equal stipend, does that reduce the amount we have in terms of, of payroll because stipend not a, does that have any difference? I, I meant to ask you guys this beforehand, but I didn't.
So I haven't actually looked at the stipend issue, there would probably be some qualifications on it, just so that it doesn't look like we're changing the elected official salary directly. And so there's going to be some, some requirements associated with that and, but if it's categorized correctly as a stipend, then it would work that way.
Yeah, other counties that do it that way, it's not really a stipend, they have, it's like a, goes into deferred comp, so it's not taxable. A stipend would be taxable and so it would, it would be something that they can either put towards their benefits or it would go to deferred comp. So it wouldn't.
If it's into deferred comp, yep.
Might have to do FICA on it, I'm not sure on that one. I'd have to look into that.
If it goes towards the premium outside of the employee, is it taxed?
I have to look that up.
Okay. But option three would, it would cover anyone if they didn't have dependents.
Yeah, you're, you're basically, your stipend into your deferred comp would vary based on what you chose as an option for your healthcare.
So each employee can choose option two, option three, whatever they want?
Each leadership employee, yeah, that's listed on that.
So we're not just going to offer one option?
No, it's, it's, we're only offering one option.
You, you would have the exact same options every employee has in the county right now. The only difference is, is you would be doing a hat tip to their role in leadership, which you can see is done in other counties, to offset the cost of their, their health insurance.
We have to select one of these options, so option one?
I'm getting a lot of stares from Joe, I'm making myself nervous.
So I think maybe the, the confusion was, no, we would not do a situation where some people chose a stipend and some people got insurance. It would be when we create this class, because, because you are elected officials and you would be included in this class, it will have to be a defined class and there will be a defined benefit. And so there will be the same for every elected or appointed position across, whether that's family insurance or whether that's a stipend, but you won't be able to select which one of those you want as an employee or an elected official.
But we could also say, you know, maybe we take option three, but we cut it in half. If that helps us get closer to the 3%.
And, and option three allows you to split that stipend however you want to split that stipend, right? So if you want to put $400 towards your health premium, you can put the balance into your deferred comp, correct?
That's a, that's a tax issue I want to look at because there are maxes on your deferred comp and so there, there are potential impacts there that I don't want to just wing on, on the record.
Unless you're old.
Okay, so I'd trade you for that option.
Obviously, when we went, when we went through our department tours, we heard this over and over and over from elected officials. Before that, I didn't really even know that that was an issue. So it was nice that that was brought to light, I didn't know it'd been 15 years or whatever it's been. So it is an issue.
It is an issue and just like, you know, we, we all heard it, all three of us heard it when we were on our tours, just like you said, I mean, it was almost every single department head that was elected brought it up. I think this is a similar thing to the COLA for general employees, is that maybe we want to do option two, if we can get to three, great, because then that includes everyone, but?
Well, you could, you could look at option four at a cost of $165,000 and make it a 50% benefit.
Or that's an option as well.
And then run it like a stipend and then it's equal to all of those that are defined in the class.
I mean?
And, and a lot of this, I'm putting into kind of this, that's why Joe keeps looking at me, because we got to figure out a way then to, if you chose one of these, to put it into Title III reflective of your decision.
And maybe that's the path that we should go, I mean, when you look at TCID and Fallon, you have employee 100% plus, family 100%, but the average on here is employee 100% plus, 50% dependent. It'd be nice to get back to, you know, just to our local competitors, TCID and Fallon, but this is just the beginning of us getting involved in this, maybe we want to bite off a smaller chunk and maybe try to work up to something like that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make the point too, that option two will not stay at $140,000.
No.
That's going to?
Well, and neither will 50% of option three. Right, every year.
None of them will, yeah, they're all going to.
I just think that the decision we make needs to be sort of equal to each person. Each person gets like an equal amount of compensation somehow.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know if option three is the best for that. I mean, it, to me, it's, it's sort of the most because each person gets a set, a set amount and they can choose how they spend it and it is what it is. And then moving forward, I think if we ever wanted to go down that road again, I think it'd be easier to increase that or decrease it because everybody was getting the same, there's not a bunch of math to be done. So, you know, you either decrease it each year or whatever, or increase it.
And I would also mention option two, some elected officials don't have a dependent or it's not going to benefit them at all.
Be right over here. And, and I mean, when you go down this list, we're a small enough county where you can go down this list and there's quite a few people in there, it's not just me that doesn't have a dependent.
Right, I, I actually didn't even think.
No, no, you're good, I was just, I wanted to throw that for the record here.
But I think, I want to point out that Manager Barbie is presenting this to, for the future of our county, to entice people to come here that, hey, they have a good program there, I want to go there. I think that's his direct, or I think that's his thinking and I think it's vital to, to know and as you know, it's hard enough to, to get people to coach baseball. So we need that participation and the only way you can entice people sometimes is with monetary value.
Yeah, I was shocked at seeing this list, I had no idea that other, other places were doing this, within our community. So.
I didn't know that. So I didn't know that either, yeah.
And just, and just to throw it out there, Chugash, the maintenance company at the base is the same as the City of Fallon and TCID.
And that's something we need to realize isn't, you know, I've even talked to Mark Fest about this. You know, when you're competing for employees, you know, that's kind of a special, but you're competing with UPS who has 100% benefits, you're competing with Chugash, you're not just competing with your industry. And so you kind of, we kind of have to change the way we look at things. And right now with people coming in, if they're just coming into PERS, it's not as good as it was when I came in. And so people are looking at how, how do I survive right now? They're not necessarily looking at 30 years down the road. They're looking at how do I pay for a home and take care of a family right now in your community? So, I mean, we have to do something to stay competitive. I like option three, but I would.
I personally like option three as well, but I'm concerned about the cost associated with option three.
Right. Well, I like option three not at that amount.
Yeah. Good way to put it, no, good way to put it.
Let's start with option three and see where it takes us.
Well, and let's see, you know, you say you take a bite of the apple, let's see where we can get, right?
But option three would more, wouldn't it be more of a controlled number? Because we know how many people we're trying to give it to.
That's the nice thing about it, is it's a set thing where you know.
Set amount, so you know what you're getting into.
You know, if you select option two, it's, I'm using me as an example again, it's beneficial for me to get married and then.
Have a bunch of kids?
Have a bunch of kids, yeah.
That means that number's going to change because somebody might be having their dependents somewhere else paying for it and now they're going to bring them.
We set an amount on option three.
So 50% would be 165,000, 75% would be 247,000.
Can you repeat those, Jim?
Hang on.
50% would be 165,000. 75% would be 147,500. 247,500, sorry.
Say that one more time.
200, 150.
Ad, ad teacher.
Exactly. Who's in charge of budget? What? 247,500.
50% of a dependent?
So a 50% of dependent stipend would be 165,000. 75% of dependent stipend would be 247,500. I feel like I'm on The Price is Right.
So would we like to pursue the option three at 50%? And if there's room to go to the 75, I mean, I don't want to be calling people out here and stuff like that because there's people on this list. But I'm a little shocked that we haven't gotten to this yet. I mean, there's some counties on here that are smaller than us, not nearly as labor-intensive and labor-hungry. And we're not even there yet. I mean, we're still just for the employee.
I'd like to start with option three as it's presented and then come work backwards on the number.
I'm not opposed to that. Does that pose any problems on the comptroller side of things? I mean, it's for you guys to keep running around trying to figure out those numbers?
Yeah, it's work, but it's okay. That's what we're here for.
Eight-five.
What I need is like a number, like if you're going to do a stipend, give me a number rather than a total cost so that we can put it to each employee.
There is a number.
That's 100%.
Yeah, that's 100. At 50%, what are you talking, 626?
No, 165,000 is half of 330,000.
Yeah, so you want me to divide the 125362? Where'd that number come from? Is that the cost of the benefits?
It's on the screen now.
Okay, thank you. So 125362 is the monthly cost of your entire family.
Okay.
All right? So that's the total cost, which is 15,043.44 a year. So.
But that's a whole, that's a whole entire family.
And then that's multiplied times 22 positions, the positions on the second page.
That's whole spouse.
So family is spouse, children.
So that's spouse and family. If we're just going to be doing a dependent, that's going to get cheaper then.
No, but, yeah. So, so here's the deal before we get, so we have three options in health, in health benefits. You can do the entire family for 1253 a month. You can do just a spouse for 766 a month. Or you can do up to five children, dependents. But when we refer to dependents above here, that's how we're referring to basically their, their family, okay, is like anyone that's dependent to that employee. That's the 75. So when we say option three, 50% would be 165,000, which would be half of 22 employees multiplied times 15,043. I think it's 22 total on that second page. Or 75%, which would be 247,000, which would be 75% of the 15,043 times the 22 staff that are listed on the next page.
So I can just take this 125362 divided by, times 50%, and that's what each employee's going to get on the back of this page.
Or 75, I guess.
Oh, are we doing 75? Are we going to get so confused?
We're starting, we're starting as the number's presented. So an even 125362 a month is what we're starting with to see where it lines in the budget.
Okay.
And then after we get the budget, we're going to decide if we want to make that lower.
Peel that back if we need to get somewhere.
And we're going to present to you a by employee number, so it's easy to do the math on.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we need for the budget because it's all different departments.
Yep. Okay.
To be clear again, the 330,000 represents the cost of a full family.
Right.
Okay, that's what, which is the most expensive. That's the Cadillac with the dangly dice in the, in the rearview mirror thing.
That's as high as that number's going to get.
Yes.
And I want to reiterate that we can work backwards from this full amount if we need to, to get the employees to 3%.
Correct.
And that is not really 3%. That's 4.675.
Correct, because you have, depending on the employee, that's 4.65% or that's.
3.65.
No, no, way more than that. That would be 4.75%.
Too many mics, people.
If you're police and fire, that's a much bigger number.
Right.
But just regular employees, non-police and fire, that represents, 3% is not 3%, it represents 4.65%.
Which they're not included in this 3% because they're negotiated.
No, because we included that in the base build of the budget.
No, some of them are, because some of them are at the employees.
Okay, so we're going to start off with option number three, with the understanding that we need to peel that back or cut that back to get a higher COLA somewhere else, we will do that. Everyone's in agreeance on that?
Yes.
Perfect. Is there anything else we need to address on here? Okay, is there any public comment? We stand adjourned. Thank you, guys.